Thank you for rocking the shirt. Nice to be on. Sir, if I could have you right here in the second row? Yeah, in the first row? Now, would you guys right here? Want to have you right here, please? You already have.
I think the people who are holding the certificates.
They'll take a picture after and they'll let other.
Yes.
Already we'll have you face right here on this side. Is that the last? Is that the last? Is that everybody?
That look okay?
Yeah. Ready to go, Mayor?
Do we have everybody up here? Yeah, okay. We can go ahead and whenever they're ready, we can go ahead and get started.
While you're doing that, I'll just go behind everybody.
On their computer.
Should be free.
Okay, sounds good. All right, afternoon, everyone. How we doing? Everybody good? How's it going? Yeah, good to see y'all. So, we're gonna get started here in just a moment. Ready? Okay. Everybody ready?
Yes.
Awesome, awesome. We'll get started.
All right, folks, going live in five, four, three.
Good evening, when I start this, everyone. Thank you for joining us for tonight's special presentations. As we recognize our Moreno Valley Level Three sponsors for our first special presentation, which is a recognition of our volunteers for the Beautify Movil Cleanup Completion. And as you see here behind me, we have several community members, community leaders, representing their respective organizations and community groups that are accepting these awards and recognitions on behalf of the rest of their communities. And I just want to say, you know, I'm sure most of you and folks at home that are listening have spent some time, or maybe a lot of time, volunteering in the community. And one of, I think, our most favorite events that happens here in the city is the Community Days of Service, where we all get together here outside of City Hall on Saturday mornings, and then we go out to the parks and do various activities from painting to putting fresh mulch on our playgrounds and planting trees and so many other things. And along with that, there are trails around the city, there are parks, there are roads that have been adopted as well. And so, it all just culminates in a better and a stronger community. Because, you know, our staff works hard, but when we have volunteers coming out, residents coming up and stepping up to give their time, give their labor to beautify our city, we're that much better off. And you see the results, right? You see that we're improving as a community. So, today, this first presentation is just to recognize and honor all those who are putting in the time and putting in that effort to help beautify our community. Just a little bit about the program. The Beautify Movil program is a community engagement and beautification program. The initiative encourages families, organizations, and businesses to adopt or sponsor a park, trail, or road. And as you drive through the city, you may see in different parts of town the signs that are posted and installed around town that have the names of the organizations that adopted that section of road or the park. So, again, just want to make sure that we give that recognition and highlight those that are putting their time into it. The program has three levels of commitment, the highest being a Level Three, which is 12 cleanups per year or a donation of $6,000 or more. Tonight, we recognize the 18 outstanding Level Three contributors who are standing here behind me. And these contributors have selflessly gone above and beyond to keep our streets clean. If you could all please join me in a big round of applause for them, please. Now, without further ado, I'm going to recognize our outstanding Beautify Level Three sponsors, and there are 18, so I know we probably want to applaud everyone. If we want to go through 18 rounds of applause, or we could just hold it till the end, I'll just go down the list of 18, and we'll hold our applause until the very end. So, I'm just gonna go in chronological order here, from one to 18. First, we have United Material Handling. Second, we have the 492 Attack Squadron. Third is Amazon Distribution. Fourth is Heritage Hauling, and maybe if I call your name, kind of raise your hand, wave hello. Fifth, we have Victory Outreach. Six, we have M&amp;J Service Work. Seven, we have King Automotive Services. Eight is SRG Commercial. Nine is Freedom Transportation LLC. Ten is Trail Sharks Off-Road Four by Four. That sounds like fun. Eleven is the Cub Scout Pack One Hundred and Troop One Hundred. Twelve is Team Robinson. Thirteen is the Gomez Quinteto Team. Fourteen is Inland United Soccer Club. Fifteen Moreno Valley Trail Seekers. Sixteen is James C. Baker II. Seventeen is Heacock Commerce Center. And last but not least, Proveen Porveen Doors. And that's our 18 recognitions for today. Can we all give them a big round of applause? I would like to just once again thank each and every one of your organizations and all of those who come out and volunteer with you for what you do outside of the limelight. Oftentimes, these volunteer opportunities are thankless, and we just want to give this special moment to recognize all of you. So, tonight, it's your time to shine and be recognized. And I'm sure you have family members and friends here, colleagues, that probably want to take pictures as well, so, you know, we'll get to that once we conclude the special presentations. But, once again, just want to congratulate you. Thank you for putting in the time and the effort to beautify our city. Thank you for being here with us, and, you know, just look forward to working with you more and more as time goes on. So, thank you once again. And if we could take a group picture with the council, if the council would like to come down, and we could take a big group picture.
All right, so, we're gonna do three rows instead of... So, everyone in the back, get some of the shorter folks out towards the front. Just, we'll have council on the sides. You folks, if you can scooch in, and everyone, if you can see my full body good, if you can see someone's like head or shoulder, the camera will not see you, all right? Back there, I can have you right there, there we go. Good. You two this way, just a bit. All right, looks like everyone's good. All right, we do a couple, nice big smiles, everyone. One, two, three. All right, and then one, two, three. And one more for safety, one, two. Wonderful.
All righty. And now, we will move on to our second item on our special presentations, which is the Arbor Day proclamation that will be presented by District Four Councilmember Shaylinda Bernard.
Good evening, everyone. It is my great honor and pleasure to present a proclamation recognizing April 28th, 2023 as National Arbor Day. Accepting this proclamation is Melissa Walker, our Public Works Director and City Engineer. Melissa, would you please come forward? Arbor Day is an annual observance that celebrates the growth and care of trees in our lives and promotes tree planting and care. Arbor Day has been recognized as a formal holiday since it was first observed in 1872 in Nebraska. Arbor Day symbolizes a desire to expand consciousness for the future. It is a special day in which we encourage humanity to plant trees as a consideration of hope for future generations. The simple act of planting a tree represents a belief that the tree will grow and someday provide wildlife habitat, erosion control, beauty, and inspiration for ourselves and our children. Our environment and its natural habitat are part of our daily lives, and we need to continue to preserve its beauty today, tomorrow, and always. Moreno Valley is now awarded the Tree City USA designation and has shown its initiative in the city's Momentum Movil Strategic Plan. Cities over our vast country recognize Moreno Valley as a tree city, and we plan to keep that honor for the years to come. It is my pleasure to now present the following proclamation. Okay. All right, hold on, sorry, sorry. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world as the day to spread joy and well-being by planting and protection of trees and woodlands, and whereas the trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, whereas trees are renewable resource giving us paper and countless wood products, and they also increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, does hereby proclaim April 28th, 2023, as Arbor Day in the City of Moreno Valley, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Citizens are further encouraged to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Melissa, would you like to say a few words?
This proclamation is greatly appreciated. It really does show the support for the community tree program, and obviously, it also helps us maintain our status in the Tree City USA program. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and that brings us to our third special presentation today, which is the recognition of the Firefighter of the Year. And we'll have that presentation by Mayor Protem Ed Delgado.
All right, good evening, guys. I'll make this quick. The City Council and the City of Moreno Valley greatly values our public safety personnel, and as such, we are proud to recognize our Firefighter of the Year for 2022. Although all of our firefighters do a great job day in and day out, this is our opportunity to recognize one that has demonstrated the true meaning of leadership and great work ethic. So, I know I see a lot of uniformed personnel, I can't pick every one of you, which I wish I could. Maybe that's why you guys think you're here. But I'm gonna call for one, and Mr. Rob Black, step up. Congratulations, brother.
Thank you.
Chief Park, can you join us up here, too? Firefighter Paramedic Black is known as a man of integrity and a person with the ability to always maintain a positive attitude that is contagious. Firefighter Black graduated from Cal State Fullerton and completed the Fire Academy in 2014. Shortly after, he joined Station 58 for about seven years, and then transferred to Station Two in May of 2021. As an explorer mentor, he strives to better positively shape the minds of the Moreno Valley students that participate in that program. And as a Moreno Valley College Paramedic Program Instructor, he provides students with a basic understanding of fire service and operations at the entry-level skills required by Cal Fire. With the support of his wonderful wife and three children, are they here?
Yes.
Awesome, we're gonna get pictures later. Fire paramedic, firefighter-paramedic Black will continue his tenure of service to the residents of Moreno Valley. On behalf of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, I would like to present you with this certificate of recognition and wish you congratulations on being named Firefighter of the Year for 2022 for the City of Moreno Valley. So, I don't know if you're a public speaker or not, but this is your opportunity to show them what you got. So, all those guys in blue want to hear from you.
I'm not all good looks, so, I'll give it a shot. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the mayor, the city council, the dignitaries here for allowing us to have this presentation here. Thank you for inviting us and having us, and I'd like to take a moment to thank who I think are the unsung heroes of first responders everywhere, the families that support us. I know I would be unable to do my job if it wasn't for my beautiful wife, Stephanie. Stephanie, thank you for everything that you do. You're an attorney, mother of three, and you still find time to ride your horses every day, and I know my girls are gonna grow up with an extremely great role model because of you. So, thank you for loving me the way that you do and supporting me. If I could shed some light on the first responders in the back. When I started in 2014, the County of Riverside ran approximately 140,000 calls. Compared to 2022, we're near 193,000, so that's about a 27% increase in call volume. The Battalion Nine firefighters have never batted an eye at the increased call volume, they've always gone to respond due to adversity, and it just shows their courage and candor, showing up every day and putting out 100% effort. Last year, the City of Moreno Valley firefighters responded to 22,000 calls. So, whether that be fire, medical, or anything of the sort, and they did so honorably and with integrity. So, I wouldn't be up here if it wasn't for them, because they definitely bring out the best in me. I'm very proud of them, from the ones that were with me from day one, like Captain Don Norton, Captain Carlos Nino, to the ones that I had in the interim, like Captain Johnston, Doug Kishi, and to my crew that I currently have now on Truck Two, which I'm extremely proud of, Captain Matt Bryant, who drove all the way here from Arizona to be here, Engineer Dallas Smith, and firefighter Sean Towser. Every day, they challenged me to be the better version of myself, and they're the reason I'm up here. So, I appreciate all of you. Thank you, guys, for supporting me, and thank you for laughing at my bad jokes.
I couldn't say it better than that. That's why he's Firefighter of the Year. His candor and his honesty, and we just really appreciate him, so I think Rob said it all. Thank you. Great public speaker.
We're gonna get the entire scene. Okay. Yeah, absolutely. Show them what you got, Steph. I'll take like two steps this way.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And that will conclude our special presentations for today. Once again, congratulations to everyone who was recognized today. Thank you for all of your work, and we will go ahead and move into our regular council meeting. It is now approximately 6:04 PM, so we will just move right into our regular council meeting here. Good evening and welcome to the Joint Meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City as Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on April 18th, 2023, at 6:05 PM. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Bernard, and that will be followed by the invocation from Father Romeo Selección from St. Christopher Parish. Please remain standing for the invocation by Father Romeo Selección.
And let us pray. God of Understanding, listen to the prayers of our hearts, the words from our lips, and the wisdom of our minds. We implore you to send your spirit of wisdom into this gathered honorable body, people and leaders of the City of Moreno Valley, that they become for one another and for the communities around us as ambassadors of hope. So that whatever plans they want to accomplish, whatever decisions they want to support, whatever vision they want to endorse, and whatever values they want to share, be they always be for the common good and in accordance with God's will and design. Loving God, bless and inspire these leaders, that they will have the honor, fidelity, and commitment to work justly with compassion, to work honestly with humility, to work wisely filled with wisdom, and to work gratefully with generosity. With your leadership, may the communities deserved become places where no one is so poor as to have nothing to give, and no one is so rich as to have nothing to resent. We ask these prayers in the name of Jesus, who continually fills our hearts with blazing hope, now and forever. Amen.
Thank you very much, Father Romeo Selección. That brings us now to our roll call. Madam Clerk, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Marcus.
Here.
Councilmember Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Protem Delgado.
Here, ma'am.
And Mayor Cabrera.
Here. Staff introductions, please.
Jane Halsted, City Clerk.
Patty Rodriguez, Senior Deputy City Clerk.
Paul Bradvica, Deputy City Clerk.
Stephen Quintanilla, Interim City Attorney.
Mike Lee, City Manager.
Brian Mohan, Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Michael Lloyd, Assistant City Manager for Development Services.
Sean Callaher, Acting Community Development Director.
Melissa Walker, Director of Public Works.
Jeremy Babnik, Director of Parks and Community Services.
Ken Reichel, Chief Police.
And Jesse Park, Fire Chief.
Thank you very much. A reminder that the city is currently offering Spanish translation services if anyone is interested in this feature. Before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to keep their comments respectful toward others, especially toward the individual speaking. I embrace and support the First Amendment right to free speech, including everyone's right to speak freely. right to speak at this meeting, and to share their views about issues concerning our city. But we can be more productive by being civil and respectful toward one another in this meeting. Finally, I ask that speakers bear in mind that comments will be limited for each speaker, and I encourage everyone to refrain from duplicating comments already made by others other than to note that you agree or disagree with the prior comments. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond during public comments. Any council comments or questions to staff may be addressed during the council closing comments. This brings us to our public comments on matters not on the agenda. Each speaker will be allowed an equal amount of time to comment on any and all items which are not on the agenda, which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Madam Clerk, how many requests to speak do we have for non-agenda items?
We have eight thus far, Mayor.
Eight requests to speak, okay. So we will allocate three minutes per speaker for non-agenda items, and if we could go ahead and call up the first speaker, please.
Okay, the first speaker is Fred Bonuelos, followed by Shane Yasas, followed by Jeff Sims.
Hello, everyone. March 21st, our Mayor Protem motioned to have the City Council oppose AB 742. Fourteen days... Well, at that time, David Marquez seconded it. Fourteen days later, David Marquez said that he didn't have enough time to read the emails at that time. He wanted to go on record that he couldn't make an intelligent decision. I feel that you had more than enough time to research that issue on your own. On 4/4/23, fourteen days later, is when it came before the council, and our mayor, Yolissias Cabrera, he stood his ground, and he voted no. And I wasn't for that, but he did that, whereas Councilmember David Marquez, he abstained. I want to go on record that you abstaining on that matter was very disappointing. You have a background in law enforcement, and you should know how valuable a tool K9s On April 14th, K-9 Rudy was killed while searching for an armed career criminal. K-9 Rudy saved the lives of multiple deputies by finding the suspect. This is one of the many reasons why we need K9s. I want you to remember that, sir, and I want you to contact your state legislator to oppose AB 742. It's in the Appropriations Committee, but if it does come up, I want you to tell them that you've done research, and you're gonna vote against that. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Shane Yasas, Jeff Sims, and Donovan Siddique.
It's Isaias for the record. My name is Shane Isaias. I am an environmental activist with the Center for Community Action and Environmental Justice from Heropa Valley. But most importantly, I am a Moreno Valley resident, and I lived right on Day Street. And yesterday, I was in Sacramento talking with Majority Leader Reyes about her bill, AB 1000. It resoundingly passed through the Natural Resources Committee, and it is on its way to its next committee next week, but it was addressed that every single Assembly member thought that there's a problem in the inland empire when it comes to warehouse. The problem is that too many of these developments are near sensitive receptors, mostly communities of color and low poverty. I'm not anti-warehouse. I'm anti-warehouse next to sensitive receptors. And I think that AB 1000 does a great job in making sure we identify that these people who have been marginalized so much finally get some support that they need. Currently, as the bill states, AB 1000 sets a thousand-foot setbacks, but it was addressed that that may or may not be too much for each warehouse, especially when it comes to developing in the city. So what I'm asking for the council to do is to reach out to Alois Reyes or James Ramos, who is pushing his opposition bill, 1748, which sets a 300-foot setback from warehouses. And let's come up with a common ground where we not only balance commerce and development of warehousing, but also establish safe public health for the citizens of Moreno Valley. I mean, I firsthand know when I had to go to urgent care two weeks ago and wait three and a half hours because of so much public health crises we have in our city that we have a problem. And we have to start doing stuff to make a difference. And like I said, I'm not anti-warehouse. I have family members that are union members, and they live very close by in Riverside. And I just want my kids to grow up in a city that has clean air and that isn't plagued by truck traffic and PM 2.5 and the 70% increase of asthma rate in our city. We are one of the worst in ozone, and we are one of the worst in air pollution, and yet we still take baby steps when we need to have a sense of urgency to create and develop not recklessly, but with public health and commerce in a balance, in a symbiotic relationship. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Jeff Sims, Donovan Siddique, and Pete Blackard.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilpersons, and my name is Jeff Sims. LaFico's draft municipal service review and sphere of influence update 2022 states in its assessment of Moreno Valley, "The median household income is lower than the rest of the county. The land use profile is disproportionately skewed towards industrial development. The city will not meet its regional housing assessment for the sixth cycle. These findings confirm Moreno Valley has made a policy decision to make industrial use its main economic driver. Every entrance portal to the city has or is planned to have large box industrial use to welcome all citizens and visitors." To what result? Warehouse jobs providing household incomes lower than the rest of the county, tough traffic congestion getting in and out of Moreno Valley, longer commute times for every Moreno Valley citizen who needs to work outside of Moreno Valley to earn living wages, more and more air pollution. And all of this is without the World Logistics Center being built. As a reminder, the World Logistics is 2,800 acres, zoned for 40 million square feet of warehouse use at the city's east end. World Logistics is supposed to start construction this year. What will the traffic congestion and air pollution be like for us all when that is built out? It doesn't take a degree from MIT to figure that out. Other inland empire cities are tapping the brakes on warehouses, especially those close to homes. The state, as the previous speaker just said, is looking at creating set buffers. It is hoped leadership of the city will realize saturating the city with warehouses and cannabis operations may be short-sighted and harmful to the quality of life of all citizens of Moreno Valley. Honor your recently approved general plan update, where part of its vision and guiding principles is to have livable neighborhoods that prioritize clean water, air, fresh food, and community health, and ensure Moreno Valley's livable and welcoming. When is enough enough? Thank you.
The next three speakers.
Thank you, and Madam Clerk, sorry to cut you off. I did get a request from staff to just take a 10-minute break so that they can set up a monitor outside, since we do have a large crowd. So at this time, we're gonna take a 10-minute break, but we'll be back in just a moment. Okay. We will now resume and return from our short recess here. So we will go ahead and continue where we left off, which was with public comment. And I see we have Mr. Siddique here for a public comment.
All right, I want to say good evening, everybody. Good evening, council, staff. Great job you guys continue to do. I agree with the previous speakers that also came in. Also, for everybody at home, we have an airshow coming up this weekend, so get ready for the traffic, get ready for some... So get ready for the traffic, get ready for some good fun and a lot of noise out there. Also, I want to bring accounting to you guys is this. When Dave Marquez said that there have been crimes sitting on the dais, what troubled me was the fact that there was no investigation that was triggered. When government, to me, scarcely moves, it bothers me. So I put in a request and I requested an investigation. I'm asking the city, what have they done in regards to his allegations? Basically, the response was after a reasonable search for the requested records, the search yielded no responsive records. So when a person alleges crimes, the city basically does nothing. And as advised by them Riverside County, I did put in a request with the Riverside Sheriff's Department or the department down there to look into this. If anything is down, if there's nothing there, there's nothing there. But when a trustee of the people's funds makes an allegation, I would hope my city government would do everything in their power to see if those allegations are true. Now, recently, I got some information in regards to Mr. Marquez. And I believe you have to be a resident. It is alleged that you're not a resident of Moreno Valley. And I hope you will address this issue because there's a California voter's registration form with your name on it, with your date of birth, so we know it's not your son. And it says that you live in Marietta. If that is the case, Mr. Marquez, you are disqualified from sitting on that dais. It doesn't matter you have an apartment by the senior center. You're saying in a document that says, "I declare under penalty of perjury under this laws in the state of California that the information from this form is true and correct." Now, this is alleged. I don't know if any of this is true or not, but I'm very sure Mr. Marquez will clear this up for us. Also, your Form 700, you've sold your house here and you made a profit off it. And I don't understand why you didn't disclose it on your Form 700. So there's a lot of issues here that I hope you will address to the public. And this is what we mean by transparency. And this is what we mean by regular citizens coming up here and making sure you guys are doing your job properly and by the rules. Because I guarantee you, if that was me or anybody else out here, we would either be charged with a crime, a felony, or a fine, or whatever. Do your job, do it well, and please address these allegations.
The next three speakers are Daryl Terrill, Brandon Karn, and Genevieve Alaman.
Oh, yeah, I saw my time. And severe code violations or neglect that require to be vacated to allow for repairs to take place by the landlords. Our residents who have to go through this has forced to relocate and experience financial hardships. Under California Health and Safety Code Section 17975, it is, it states, property owners have to pay relocation benefits under certain conditions if tenants are ordered to leave their home due to extensive co-violation that endangered their health and safety. However, landlords are supposed to pay those costs, but some don't pay it for it in a timely way or refuse to pay it at all. Mr. Mayor and City Council, we as a city could do something about it. We could hold these landlords accountable. Under California Health and Safety Code Section 17975.5, authorize the city to adopt an ordinance that allows the city at its sole discretion to advance relocation assistance to tenants where the property owner or designated agent fails to neglect or refuses to pay relocation benefits to displaced tenants. Currently, there's no municipal code that addresses tenant relocation assistance. I believe firmly that the people should have, shouldn't have to risk their lives to have a roof over their heads. I placed it in the public record, a draft ordinance that will provide tenant relocation assistance in situations where the property owner refuses to compensate renters who are forced to move because of co-violation. Under this proposed ordinance, residents will be entitled to up to $10,000 for relocation. The city may opt to make payments of such relocation benefits as necessary to help the displaced tenant relocate up to an amount payable by the property owner. Also, the city will be able to recruit the taxpayers' money spent to help our residents if a landlord fails to neglect or refuses to pay relocation benefits as a penalty. What I'm saying to you, there's a lot of folk, there's, not all landlords are like that. Don't pay the brush with it. But there's folks that live in slums that are roach infested. Some things that ain't caused on their own. And what this ordinance does, it doesn't, it holds the tenants accountable for the things they do. But the landlord neglect the property and these people have to live with the risk of something happening to them. So this ordinance is to hope to hold these people accountable. And we at the state of California says we can adopt one. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Brandon Karn, Genevieve Alaman, and Jesse Alaman.
Okay. First thing I want to do is I want to plug a local, now a local muralist, Rosie Cortez, who has just completed a large mural at the Moreno Valley College campus. I would like to welcome or invite the public to go out and take a look at it. I was able to do some of the volunteering on it and take a look at completion of it. I invited the city council. Only Ulysses Cabrera, as far as I understand, has been there presently and helped with a little bit of it. I know Ed Delgado said he would go at some point too before it's completed. It will be finished this week, is my understanding. So I'm just reiterating my call to the rest of the council to attend and go see that project. I'm also very proud to say, for the first time in our community's history, we have a privately funded art walk that was a raging success a week and a half ago. There were almost 50 vendors at a private event that was held in Alessandro in Indian, at a tattoo shop there. I'll forget the name, but I think Genevieve will remind you. And that's something we intend to do monthly. It will be, I believe it can now be sizable that it will rival events in Riverside, Redlands, and other parts of the county. Moreno Valley will have a private, thriving arts community, and that will be part of it. One thing I am concerned about, though, is several months ago, the council anonymously adopted the ordinance to commit, to give the Arts Commission the project of creating an ordinance so that you have at least the basics in order to accept funding, find grants, and other things like that. The Arts Commission has supposed to have had two meetings in the last two months. They have not met, as far as I understand. Two months ago, the staff was tasked with creating a report studying this topic to present to the Arts Commission, which would later be presented to the city council. They were hoping by June, before you go on recess. Most of us that were involved in that meeting and are interested in encouraging the arts in the community think that is way too long. And I was disappointed at the last study session because it was only an hour. But the one prior to that addressed the homeless issue, which I also hope comes up again, and other topics, could have very easily had four or five items. This staff report, I believe it's, if it's completed, I would imagine this, at this time it is, could be heard by the city council. You can override the Arts Commission, which you really should. In my opinion, you really should do that. Hear the item yourselves as this body. Maybe if you need a few different ones, because I know the homeless issue is going to take a few. And then at a regular meeting, draft the ordinance and adopt it. The Arts Commission has done some work in the community, but they do not meet regularly because the volunteers do not come to the meetings. Most of the time of the year, they do not have quorum. I think it's time for the city council to step in, take this item itself, and adopt it well before the summer. Because it's a very, it's not as complex as, say, the ordinance that you did last time, one of the last meetings with the mayor's responsibilities. This is something that could be done very quickly, very rapidly. And we have given many of you information on models you can follow about it. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Genevieve Alaman, Jesse Alaman, and George Hague.
Hello, City Council. Hello, Mayor Cabrera. Nice to see you guys all doing well, healthy and present today. I just want to stand here and thank you all for your hard work and determination of making Moreno Valley a better place. It's been a beautiful spring. The month, April, has been extremely busy. And it's great seeing Moreno Valley host events for the community. From Spring Tasker event to this Easter egg hunt where adults were out there running around in the dark, it's great to see things for us to attend and bring the family with. Thank you for that. April 7th, I hosted an art walk here in Moreno Valley. We had bands, live painters, artists, and it was a beautiful night. So many people were thanking me for the opportunity, opportunity to display art in their artwork in their own city, to feel valued in their community. I want to continue to host these art walks with the help of the city, just how Riverside does. I'm currently getting my business license so I can coordinate these events and to continue to do this for my community. I'm here to give everyone two opportunities this week to support Moreno Valley local artists. These past few months, I have been working alongside Palm Middle School off of Ironwood to help put together an art festival. April, if you do not know, is Autism Awareness Month. And we will be highlighting our spectrum creatives. We opened the art gallery to the entire Moreno Valley district. And almost every single school from elementary to high school are participating. I ask you all, if you can, please come see how creative our youth is. It brought tears to my eyes today hanging up artwork. It made me feel so proud of these younglings. And I want to continue to find ways to encourage their creativity. Please, Moreno Valley, show up for our youth tomorrow. Make them feel special and come see how much love art brings to our community. There will be performers, a DJ, thank you dad, food, a car show, and a whole lot of art. A family-friendly event that everyone can have fun at. I want to thank Ulysses Cabrera for responding back to our email and helping sponsor this event. The school was working with extremely low funds on this event, and the donation he made went a long way, and we truly appreciate your kindness. This Saturday, my father will have his first art gallery in downtown Riverside on Earth Day. He does living plant art, and it couldn't have been a better day for him to display his work. It's actually displayed right there in the chamber. If you guys have gotten the chance to see it, please do. Please come out and show your support for Moreno Valley artist putting himself out there. It's scary and it's not easy to do. So please, the most simple way of showing you care is simply by showing up. This is where it starts for our community, is by having ways to come together and have fun. Let's lighten up the room a bit. Everything has to be so harsh and negative, and we don't always have to be so against each other. Learn to listen, learn to laugh, learn to love each other, and let's do this the right way. I came across an Inland Empire Creative Corp grant that I mailed over to Mayor Ulysses Cabrera. He said he would have his staff apply and reach out to me when they can. I've not received any contact. Please allow me to work with you guys when applying for this grant. I believe I have a great perspective when it comes to bringing our creatives together. Please include me in this application. Allow me to have my input and help me win this, let me help you win this money for our city. All I'm asking is to be involved. Thank you guys so much, and I hope everyone's having a blessed day.
The next three speakers are Jesse Alaman, George Hague, and David Zites.
Hey, how's it going, everybody? Mr. Mayor, council, and the staff of Moreno Valley. Today, I'm just here to, well, one thing I'm going to invite you guys for Saturday. My name is Jesse Alaman. I go by Jesse Monstera now. I did concrete construction carpenter for over 25 years. One thing too, I want a big shout out to the carpenters, union carpenters that are here today representing them. That's awesome. I've worked alongside of them for many years, and I've seen them. They teach the youth, like, the right way and how to do things. And it's awesome to see them here in Moreno Valley. And as you can see, it's a big team. I started doing plants. I got involved with plants. It's really big health benefits, and I like to see a lot more activities. Especially with Earth Day, you guys are doing Earth Day. So that's awesome. I also want to thank you, Moreno Valley, for having the opportunity to show my art here. I did the loan program, and I'm actually showing my art here at the, at the chamber. I'm also going to be working with the demonstration garden pretty soon. But again, I just want to invite you guys to the 22nd and also to the autism. And then on the, some issues is, I like to see Sunny Mean Boulevard looking a little better. I'm not sure what's going on there. You guys think that we go bar hopping or something with all the dispensaries that are going on? I think someone just goes to one spot, calls it good, like, they used to be on Backstreet. Now they're just everywhere. I think it's one of those things that, you know, they say that is that gateway drug. But if you're making it easy for all these kids to just see it all the time, that means they're going to go and do harder stuff, you know? So that's kind of like, kind of sucks on that one. But I'd like to see more like, you know, gyms, exercise, some, you know, you're on chubby. Maybe I'm chubby because you guys don't have nothing. It's a yoga room, something, you know, more positive, man. You guys, car washes, you got the carpenters here. I bet you they wash their own cars. I don't think they go to the car washes. You know, these are hard construction workers. But again, I'm just here representing Moreno Valley. I try to be positive. And just, you know, I hope you guys come on, on Saturday. It's a big event for me. I've just been working on it. And art just kind of just, it targets everybody. It's not just one ethnicity. It targets so many people, especially with your Festival of the Arts, we did so well. I was a part of that, and it was a type of vibe that was just beautiful. And I'd like to see just a lot more of those activities in Moreno Valley. So thank you, guys.
And Jesse, where is that event?
I'm going to be at the Blue Rose Gallery. It's on Orange Street and University. And my, I'm also at the Riverside Art Museum right now. I have an exhibit till June. So if you guys are all welcome to come there too. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next three speakers are George Hague, David Zites, and Dr. Patsy Brown.
Good evening, George Hague. Ideally, you would have chairs outside instead of people standing staring at the monitor, and somebody can direct that, it would be good. And maybe speaker slips out there also. The World Logistics Center is poised to build more than 30 mega warehouses of over a million square feet each. They're breaking ground this year with a combined total of 13,000 daily diesel truck trips added to State Route 60 and our local streets. We do not need to add any more warehouses, especially those near people's homes where diesel pollution impacts their family's health 24/7, 365 nights and days a year. The World Logistics Center will supply construction jobs and warehouse jobs for many years to come. It is time for all of you, let me first say thanks to council members who have voted no on warehousing that are near people's homes. It is time for all of us to stop encouraging developers to offer the city money and benefits that have almost nothing to do with the warehouse in order to win your vote. The Compass Standby Center Point Warehouse promised you $1 million for the Moreno Valley Community Foundation, which has the five of you as its board members. The warehouse was approved across the street from charter schools, apartments, homes impacting students and children and families. If the C.R. Club files a lawsuit, it costs us money. We don't make money on those. And we cannot move the project. We can try to make it better, but we can't move the massive warehouse. So even though we litigate and settle and we do make it better, the pollution is still there in the area. It is time to increase the 250 feet you believe is the only distance needed between a warehouse diesel truck docks and sensitive receptors like family homes. 250 feet was a political decision to allow more warehouses in Moreno Valley and not based on any science. It also doesn't account for diesel truck aisles and turnaround in areas in front of the docks, which are usually much closer than 250 feet. I was an AFL-CIO member for more than 40 years and find it sad that we have unions pushing for warehousing near homes that impact the health of children, elderly, and families 24/7, 365 days and nights a year for more than 25 years or the life of the cement building in exchange for less than a year's work. I hope unions and their members will take a stand against warehousing near homes as if their families and children lived in them. And their time would be better spent continuing to help the youth, join unions, and also organizing warehouse workers. I hope you will make this thought, or some of my thoughts, percolate through your mind along with several other excellent comments that were made to you tonight about warehousing and their impact.
Thank you.
The next three speakers are David Zites, Dr. Patsy Brown, and Dr. James Owens.
Good evening. In a past meeting, someone may ask the question, "Why don't we have projects in front of our council?" They were blaming the council. I'm glad they did. Our council, thank you very much. I think it is because our council is not in bed with these developers. They don't need their money to get reelected. They don't make promises to keep their seats. They're not obligated to them. They're not a pushover. We need to stick with our general plan. And also, when the projects come in front of the city council or the planning commission, it's because they want changes. They want zone changes. They want building changes. They want different buildings put in from what we have all worked could get the city... They want different buildings put in from what we have all worked could get this city designed to be. But they want to come in and change it. That's the reason why they come in front of the dais. I do believe that our city council will do the right thing, stick with our planning, our general plan, stand up for our citizens, and tell the developers, "There's plenty of places to put what you want. Let's quit changing our zoning and our lands for the developers, and let's keep it for the citizens." Also, developers that come in and offer, I'll call them straight-up what they are, bribes. Why can't their projects stand on their own? If they were good projects, put in the right spots, making sure they meet all the regulations that need to be met, they shouldn't need the bribes to go with. If we are going to add added fees for parks and wrecks or any other public thing, it should be for all of them, not the ones that offer the most. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Dr. Patsy Brown, Dr. James Owen, and Francis Vinegas.
Good evening. Oh, oh, good evening, Honorable Mayor and General Counsel persons. I just want to report that at the last meeting, I did speak and say that I didn't get a meeting, and those meetings were conducted. And I thank you so much for considering my concerns. I have several on tonight. I'm gonna speak as fast as I can. One thing that was sunsetted was the Safety Committee that was in the wake of George Floyd being murdered. And we, as part of the nationwide thrust to eradicate racism throughout our country, we developed a committee, called it a Safety Committee, sunsetted June of last year. I'm asking for the council to put it back on the agenda and re-initiate that council. The other thing I want to talk about is the Home Key Grant monies available to cities in California for homelessness. It is nondiscretional money that I want the council to put back on the agenda to vote on, that is just by application only. And we, as you have heard by previous, everyone almost that spoke before me talked about the homeless situation. There's money available for us to address that without impacting our current budget, and I plead with the council and the mayor to put that back on the agenda and vote for the Home Key money. Not only that, but we as CWC, which I'm the chairperson of the Citywide Coalition, we want to partner with the city to give a voice to equability so that when that money does come, that it is equitable dispersed among the nonprofits which we represent in the city of Moreno Valley. Also, I want to talk about the blatant discrimination against churches in the city of Moreno Valley. I currently know 10 churches that are unable to find locations to hold services. I want to remind the council of our First Amendment rights to have a peaceful assembly and a freedom to practice our faith. But there's also a civil rights code from the United States Department of Justice, the Civil Rights Division, and I believe that our civil rights are being violated. I'm asking the city to look into that, that not allow these retailers or these people that own commercial property to blatantly discriminate against churches. Churches are the backbone of the community, and we also help to eliminate crime. And I also want us to be reevaluated as a community service organization so that will help us not be discriminated against, as we do a great work in this community, and I stand to say that. Thank you very much.
The next three speakers are Dr. James Owen, Francis Vinegas, and Laura Ross Jackson.
Good evening, Mayor Cabrera and the city council. So good to be here and so good to see you all doing a great work. I want to give applause to the Southwest Gentlemen, the organization that is doing a great work here in the Inland Empire, thanks to what you're doing. I just want to bring a reference to, I'm also a part of the Citywide Coalition and being a former pastor here in the city of Moreno Valley in the early years of 2012, 2016, seeing a lot of changes. And there's a lot of positivity in this city. First of all, I want to say that. And it's the churches here, the religious organizations partnering with the governments that be. It's important that we partner. They're strict in partnering. And I just want to encourage us here in Moreno Valley to partner with one another, to help assist these local churches that need help. I, too, work with pastors that are here, and they are seriously looking for locations to expand their congregation, and it's just really tough. And so I would ask that we assist local pastors here that are looking to expand their church, looking for real estate, religious organizations that need help in that area, that we would help pastors do so. Also, supporting the, to apply for the California Home Key Grant. This does not take away from the monies that is already allocated here. It's just a matter of applying for that grant, and I think it would help a lot of the needs that we have in the city, such as the joblessness, the homelessness, and the poverty that is here. So we are here to serve. We're here to partner with you, Mayor Cabrera, and the city council to make a huge difference in the city of Moreno Valley. Thank you all for the services you all provide, and we ask that you would assist us in these two issues. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Francis Vinegas, Laura Ross Jackson, and Christopher Baca.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just again, I wanted to urge everyone, I mean, urge you guys to agree to apply for the Home Key money. It's not only gonna help with the homeless issue, but it's also gonna help with, you know, a lot of the churches that are around that are also helping homeless and the families, you know, that are struggling right now. Because, you know, a lot of people are having a hard time just, you know, coming out of the pandemic and everything. And also, wanted to ask, you know, again, you know, we could classify the churches as, you know, a community organization instead of being grouped with the bars and the dispensaries and stuff, so that way we're not discriminated against. You know, the church is not only the backbone of the community, it's roots. And without roots, a tree can't live. And so I don't know about anybody else, but I need my roots. And so there's also a lot of these churches that can't find buildings that are the ones that are out there every day doing the work, trying to help the homeless, trying to help the families that are less fortunate. And so if we can do these things and get these things done, then we can... Moreno Valley is already great, but we can definitely make it better. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Laura Ross Jackson, Christopher Baca, and Tom Gerald Senior.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. I'm gonna be kinda reading a little bit. This is my first time, so bear with my nervousness. But I am here to represent, and I want to say good evening to the General Counsel person and the mayor as well. My name is Laura Ross Jackson, and I am a Realtor-Investor in the city of Moreno Valley, and I'm also a member of the CWC. Also, I like to urge the city to code the churches under the Civil Code of Community Services Organization to further protect their rights to lease and occupy facilities within the Moreno Valley property lines. I experienced, as a Realtor, going out, trying to help churches to find locations, and I've been told to, well, know churches, you know, whatever, something else they could use there, but they did not want any churches. And so I find that ironic because churches are the backbone of a city. They do help. They feed the homeless. They clothe the homeless. You have lines where, you know, where people go and get food from a lot of churches, and not to mention just the ministry itself, to get them off the streets, to rehabilitate. And you have some churches that, that's what they do. They work for rehabilitation for criminals coming out of the system, and they can't find anywhere to have their services. And so I know this firsthand. I've gone and gone through the neighborhood, looked on my services, called places, and the first thing they'll say with a recording, "No churches." So I urge you to, for the city, to protect the First Amendment rights of the churches to freely practice religion and to peaceably assemble. Thank you. Have a great evening.
The next three speakers are Christopher Baca, Tom Gerald Senior, and Pete Blackard.
Good evening, Council. I just wanted to point out some of the comments that were made regarding, I mean, relevant to Google Educated Know-It-Alls. I think last meeting, they were mentioning Mayor Cabrera shouldn't vote for that canine resolution because he had received funds from Corey Jackson, but that's just not the case because it has nothing to do with money. And for instance, if Mr. Marquez would have gotten developer money, you know, two years ago, it would be relevant to the new law that took effect January 1st. So just to keep that in mind, there's already people that are already distorting things and, you know, coming up with... For instance, I just heard environmentalists bringing out the race card with a community's sensitive receptor locations. You know, the location we're gonna be discussing has nothing to do with communities low-income and communities of color. They also mentioned balances. That's a good balance. And I also wanted to point out, in case, you know, somebody mentioned the general plan, and I just want to quote what it says here. "A general plan amendment is considered to be any change to the general plan map or text. State law provides that each mandatory general plan element may be amended no more than four times per year." So you can amend anything on the general plan four times a year. So that's state law. There's nothing wrong with amendments. You have up to four a year to do so. Also, I don't know, people mentioned something about Sunny Mead Boulevard. Yes, we need to improve Sunny Mead Boulevard, but as far as the dispensaries are concerned, I only know of two. Maybe one is too much for people, but there's only two dispensaries on Sunny Mead, as far as I know. But anyhow, just want to point out, you know, we're gonna be hearing a lot of, you know... How would I put it? I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Tom Gerald Senior, Pete Blackard, and Louise Palomeros.
Tom Gerald Senior, speaking on behalf of myself, Mayor Cabrera, Mayor Pretend Delgado, council members, members of staff and the public. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. And before I start, I just want to thank a lot of courteous people. Several people offered me their chair, and it's a packed house tonight, and so I appreciate those who were so thoughtful. And, I mean, I try not to be, should I say, sumptuous about anything, but I thank them. So, and there's a lot of courteous people. I see it so often in Moreno Valley, and it's one of our calling cards. I think how many people offered me to open the door, you know, pull some, help me with something. So it's a good card. So I'm proud of that in our city. One thing I want to talk about, my main, the state is about to, or they may have approved already, and you may know the issue. It's about catalytic converters, and if you want to take them in and get money for them, you gotta show where you got it. And so it wasn't a heist because it's very prolific. And there's another industrial component that's being stolen frequently, and I just had one of my tenants, not at our center, but in Riverside. It's the electrical components on the outside of commercial buildings, which are frequently older, and that's why they steal them, because they're hard to get. Case in point, the ones that were stolen from his building yesterday in his restaurant in Riverside, he can't get for a month. He shut down. And the landlord won't put a new panel in, so all his food's going away, so it's a pitiful, pitiful thing. And it's a fire hazard, you know, I mean, it could start a fire. Lucky some of these idiots haven't been knocked on their tail and killed, and maybe they have some places. So I think that's something we should address our state people to take a look at about, "Where did you get this?" Much similar, use that other bill as a pattern. Now, tonight, obviously, it looks like we're in a very spirited, lively public hearing, which I affirm. And, you know, in three months, we're gonna celebrate the, less than three months, we're gonna celebrate the birthday of this country. And I was just thinking, and I just thought as I walked in and saw the big crowd, what a beautiful thing that is, whether you're for or against. You know, we have, because of that flag, because 230-plus years ago, a group of ladies and gentlemen sat down and said, you know, "We can make this better." And in reality, there were of all, you know, backgrounds and races, and it's a beautiful thing. So bottom line, celebrate democracy. I affirm everybody's right to speak, whether, how they feel about an issue, and that's a beautiful thing, and we should treasure that. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Pete Blackard, Louise Palomeros, and Roy Blackard.
Good evening. I support all the canines, and I hope they get more. I would like to tell you, when I was in grade school, President Truman was elected, so that gives you time how long I've been around. I would like to talk about these developments, warehouses, and probably the ones that are coming up. This is what my deal is, is Edgemont. Edgemont's always had a problem with the water. Now, if you wanted, only one other person wanted to see where we used to drink water when I was a kid, out of a reservoir there. That was where it came from, after they pumped it out of the water. So if this new one comes in, and I'm supporting all warehouses, new and existing, and keep bringing them in, because if it wasn't for them warehouses, you wouldn't have all them nice, beautiful schools. If you want to go to the history book and see old Midland School, go look at, see what I had to go to school with. You guys are living in luxury. So we had perfect air conditioning. It was hot in the summer and damn cold in the winter. So I want to let you know. But anyway, we get this together, and we need to, if you support this, I think you should, and Roy will get it better than me, because he owes all the numbers, he's a good number man, is so we can improve the water deal. I want to tell you, the whole thing what happened there was when Fritz Duda came into here, he would not come into the city, you heard what I said, what he said. He would not come into the city, and after a year, all the Riverside Bridgeway property and everything north there from Pigeon Pass to Clark Street was all under the Duda Company. And they would not come in here until they got redevelopment. And their big story was, they were gonna fix the Edgemont Water District. They pilfered the money away with city councils on glorious, like, pinky sidewalks and every other damn thing. We had a big old park out there called the Horse Park, $2.5 million, I bet you, if you figure all the money was spent on it. And Edgemont got cheated out of it. Victoria, I worked with her, she tried to get it, but by the time it was there, redevelopment was over, and she said, "Yes, we could have got the money, but it's over, done." Now's the time for this council, if you're gonna pass anything, any warehouse, I don't care what it is, try to get some of the developed money over to the water company. Because it takes almost two years. If you could get the money today and get a bonding issue, it takes you two years just to get a plan on to get it to started, you know? So you really need to work on that. I don't know if you can, you know, it can be done. You're control of the money. You guys control the purse. So Edgemont is never gonna develop until you fix the water system. And trying to piece me a little like you just done in the last two, which I'm glad it got done, it still ain't gonna get any better. Get more warehouses and try and get us some damn money over there and fix the town up correctly.
The next three speakers are Louise Palomeros, Roy Blackard, and Bob Palomeros.
Louise Palomeros, community activist. Wow, we got the spin doctors here today talking about how bad this project's gonna be, when it's gonna give us lots and lots and millions and millions and millions of dollars. Wow, it's a great project. I have so many, my daughters live out there. I got grandkids that live right there by the project where they're gonna build it. We need this. They're gonna bring a sports arena, I believe. I read, they're gonna bring all of that, and the money, and as far as the arts, the two speakers that came and talked about the arts, maybe we could use some of this money to really get that up and running. Not only that, the debt fees are gonna be great. So this is a win-win situation for the city. And you got speakers coming up here and, you know, deluding and lying about, they don't got the real facts. I don't believe they got the, I call them spin doctors. As far as, like I said, I got about 40 members out there, family members, nieces, nephews, sons, daughters, great-granddaughters, granddaughter... granddaughter, all of it. And they live right there by that project. Solari's Papers, Aldi's, Pro Lodges, they live right there. And they could say, Mom, wow, wait a minute. I go, you know, this is going to bring money to our community. Let's bring it. It's a win-win, win-win situation. I'm, I support the project and I hope we can do the right thing for the people, not for the handful, the people, the community. We need this revenue. We need this tax dollars. It's a good project. I hope it comes. And as far as they're worrying about the building, it's one more building. That's it. That's all you can put there. Unless we're going to put hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of apartments there. Because what, what else could you put there?
Ms. Palomares, we, we also will have public comment for F2 as well.
I know that.
Specific project.
Thank you. I know that, but I'm saying it right now also because I might not have enough time then. So you, you, saying all that, now you, I lost my train of thinking here. Saying all that, I support the project. And like I said, it's going to bring good things to the community, the revenue. And I'm saying it again, and I can't talk enough about it. So thank you. And, uh, I guess I'll, I lost my train of thinking, but I guess it'll come back to me. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Roy Blackard and Bob Palomares.
You will have to wait till F2 comes up to hear my ever-present comments on the project de jour of the day, but I wanted to say this. K-9 Rudy gave his life protecting us, protecting our deputies, making our community safer. K-9 hater Corey Jackson, his political partners in crime, Ulysses Cabrera and David Marquez, would like to eliminate this. Go look at the rules and procedures, Mr. Marquez, about abstention votes and what it says in there about them. You're trying to make this community safe. It's a no-brainer. You know what? Because of Rudy, we're probably not having our third funeral procession that we've had in this county that was too, too many. You're making this community unsafe? It really pains me that my native area has elected a K-9 hater Corey Jackson to represent us and put this legislation in front of us and make the commitment to try and make this community unsafe. You work on this every day. We try to do this. We had, we have DAs coming down from up north, coming that, joining our sheriff DA and police chief of Riverside saying, your community is unsafe. Don't believe the statistics. That was sheriff chat. Crime is on the rise. It's time we're honest about this stuff. No, these are not conspiracy theories. When you see evidence put in front of you, that is not a conspiracy theory. Consequences. If consequences do not put punishment, you're going to get more. Look at the Meg Oliver report from CBS at Redlands School of the abuse of our kids on top of that and everything else that's going on. And what went on right here in this city that is still outstanding? I want to hear Ulysses Cabrera and David Marquez swear under oath what they've been saying. And then let's go from there with the evidence. You five have the power to put that in front. You have the power to open up the closed session. You have the power to waive the attorney-client privilege. You talk about transparency. You talk about United. You talk about you don't want to deal with this stuff. Then let's open it up. Let's see where the evidence goes and let's go from there. You want to heal this community? You want to make it better? Then let's all start working together to do it. Because if we don't, it's going to be the same as we've had and even worse if we keep on the same path.
The final speaker is Bob Palomares.
Good evening. As always, I always like to salute police and fire chiefs. And, uh, I kind of want to piggyback on what Roy was saying about, uh, the canine that we lost. You know, he, last month, he was in Las Vegas in the competition of canines with their handlers, and he took first place in the category of protecting his handler. But even more, he gave it, his life for that handler. You know, I, I was kind of remembering the lady that was here. I think the last council meeting, her husband was a canine handler. And she was saying about when they would come home, she would always go and talk to the canine, say, thank you for bringing my husband home, protecting. And look at this. This officer got to go home, not with this canine, but he's home. And, uh, you know, Corey Jackson, the loser, he also has a bill where he doesn't want law enforcement sharing photos of, I guess criminals or whoever with social media, you know? So he don't want to warn anybody that this guy committed a crime, you know? Don't put his picture out there. But we know who he is, so he's number one. And, uh, real quick, you know, I feel kind of bad for Shalinda because he has to listen to a lot of this stuff that comes up here. But Roy and Donovan Siddique are correct. And you know, this stuff's not going to go away until it's taken care of. You know, Marquez, you bring all this garbage to our doorsteps and it goes way back. It's not just, you know, I got the same information that Siddique has. You know, you signed documents at the DMV stating your address. You signed, uh, voter registration documents saying where you live. You know, so this is all your own doing. Nobody's, you know, it's just amazing. And someone was mentioning about, uh, bribes and, you know, councilmen being on the take or something. Well, you remember, Marcus, when they wanted to build up there on JFK and I think it's Moreno Beach or Nathan, when they wanted to put up the, the mini mart with the car wash, you escorted the developer, I think his name was Ollie, out to the, uh, planning commission meeting. And then, but he, he backed out of the deal because there was too much opposition. And you said, check the money that I got. And you got $30,000 from him.
Madam Clerk, do we have any more public speakers?
No, that concludes all public comments on items not on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, so that will conclude public comments on non-agenda items. And, um, at this time, I know traditionally we would move into joint consent calendars, but, uh, just out of respect for, um, the folks that are here for public speaking on item F2, I'm going to propose that we move up item F2 on the agenda so that we can, uh, take that item now, uh, go into a public, uh, hearing. And again, just to be respectful of everybody's time. So I'll, I'll make a motion at this time to move item F2 up in the agenda so that we can go ahead and hear that item now.
Mayor, before we address any, um, council business, could we address the, ask the question if council member Marquez is allowed to sit on the dais? Has he moved out of Moreno Valley? I've heard from two people and I see documents up there. Is there?
So I, I think, uh, this time council member Marquez, um,
Do you want to respond to that?
Did you have a response?
Yeah, that's.
Go right ahead.
It's appropriate.
First of all, I want to make some clarification. Um, $30,000, if you ever look at my, my, my forms, I have never, ever received $30,000 from the developer. So that's, that's fact. Look at the 460s. Where this comes off the wall, $30,000. That'd be nice. Um, I want to address this, um, resident, um, issue real quick. You know, federal law, state law, there's no law saying that you can own property outside of any other city that you live in. So where this comes from, that I moved to Marietta, I bought a house in Marietta for investment. I know there's some people on this council here, colleagues of mine, that own property outside of the state. I believe. I might be wrong, but I believe it. So, you know, they're, they're trying everything to get me off this council, just like my colleague over here saying, let me, let him address it. Well, you know, transparency is transparency. When you have a private life, it's not transparency. But I'll just clear the air right now. Yes, I sold my house. And yes, I bought a house in Marietta. And yes, I changed my address for DMV on my driver license. Yes, I did. I didn't change my voter, voter registration because I do live here in Moreno Valley. And I own, not own, I rent an apartment. Does it say that I have to have a house to be on the council? No, it says I have to have a resident address in the district I live in. So, yes, I own a house and I bought it for my granddaughter. And my granddaughter cannot own property, so it's under my name. There is nothing wrong with it. And all my money that I made from my other house is invested into that house. So where these people are so concerned about me owning a house, I don't have any personal property in that house. So I just want to clear the air on that. And I hope that, that I, that's the last I hear of it. As for my registration to vote, I never changed it. It's still here in Moreno Valley where, where I reside at the apartment. Nothing wrong with that. So I just want to clear the air and, and that's the whole story. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, so we'll go ahead and, uh, return back to the motion. Uh, there was a motion to move item F2 on the agenda, up in the agenda so that we can take that item up now. Um, so I'll make that motion. I'm seeking a second on that. Okay. Um, so a motion and a second from, uh, council member Marquez. Uh, please, please vote. That passes five yeses. Uh, so we will go ahead and we'll come back to the joint consent calendar after item F2. Uh, but at this time, we'll go ahead and move into item F2. Uh, just as a reminder, that is the Moreno Valley Trade Center, um, item F2 on tonight's agenda. And, uh, first part of item F2 is a report from our community development department.
So I'm, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to actually refer it to, um, City Attorney Steve Quintanilla to start, and then I will, uh, proceed with my presentation.
I just wanted to address some comments that were raised in some of the letters or raised by some of the speakers, um, tonight about the project. I don't know why I'm buzzing here. The first issue is that, uh, the developer is offering community benefits and they're voluntary. Um, that means, um, in this situation, the city cannot unilaterally impose on the developer the requirement that they provide these community benefits because it has been determined that there is a lack of any nexus between the community benefits and the impacts of the project. But the developer has agreed to, um, have these community benefits converted to enforceable conditions of approval. So though, if they don't follow through on their promises to provide these community benefits, we can actually rescind the project approval. I'd also like to point out that these are not bribes. These community benefits are not bribes because none of the council members are going to benefit financially, directly financially, um, or get any particular benefits, um, from these community benefits. Um, the other issue is that there is an issue raised about the campaign contribution law. Um, so the speaker referenced Senate Bill 1439. That's a law that took effect January 1st, 2023. And basically, Senate Bill 1439 provides that under certain circumstances, if a council member received a campaign contribution of more than $250 from an applicant or the applicant's representative, um, that would create a conflict of interest for that particular council member, meaning that they would have to recuse themselves from participating in the decision regarding this project. The council may not accept more than 50, $250 from an applicant or applicant's representative 12 months after the final decision on the applicant's project. So, um, in December, um, the Fair Political Practices Commission ruled that any campaign contributions received in 2022 are exempt from Senate Bill 149, 39. So this means we can only consider those campaign contributions received since January 1st, 2023. And I think there's one. And just, there's the one final issue, which comes at the end, uh, but for clarification purposes, I thought I'd mention this. So if the council approves staff's recommendation by adopting the resolutions in the packet and the ordinance, um, it will in effect grant the appeal which overturns the planning commission's denial of the project. So basically, the project would be approved. If the council, however, is inclined to deny the project, a, a majority of the council must vote to deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's denial of the project based on the findings made by the planning commission. So I just wanted to preface his staff report with those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The project before you this evening is a consideration of the Moreno Valley Trade Center project. Before I go into detail on the project, I would like to identify that there was a packet provided to you prior to this evening's meeting, which included public comments received after the publication of the agenda, as well as a letter from the applicant regarding three additional community benefits that they would like to offer based off of discussions with local residents located to the south of the project site. The applicant before, the application before you this evening is a request by the applicant to overturn the planning commission's denial of the proposed general plan amendment and a request for the approval of the proposed Moreno Valley Trade Center project, including the fi, final environmental impact report, general plan amendment, change of zone, tentative parcel map, and plot plan for the purposes of developing and constructing an approximately 1,000, or 1, I'm sorry, 1,263,271 square foot warehouse and logistics center, or as an alternative of fulfillment e-commerce center facility. The 80-acre project site is bound by Eucalyptus Avenue to the north and Celia Avenue to the south, Quincy Channel to the east, and Redlands Boulevard to the west. The applicant is requesting a general plan amendment to change the land use designation of the project site from residential 2 to business park. Similarly, the applicant is requesting a change of zone to rezone the property from residential 2 district and primary animal keeping overlay zone to the light industrial district. The proposed site plan has been modified from the original plan that was presented to the city council in December of 2021. In there, in that there is no vehicular access of any kind along Encelia Avenue. Additionally, the proposed detention basin has been relocated, and in its place, a berm is now proposed to aid in both visual screening and noise attenuation. Finally, the building size has been reduced, um, to the 1,263,271 square feet. As a result of the smaller building footprint, the building elevations have seen only minor changes. And here we have a, uh, the revised landscape plan, which depicts the newly proposed berm along Encelia Avenue. As identified at the beginning of my presentation, the environmental impact report was prepared to disclose environmental effects for the proposed project and feasible mitigation measures. As noted in the staff report, significant and unavoidable impacts have been identified related to substantial adverse effects on scenic vistas, air quality management plan conflict, criteria pollution emissions, and GHG emission generation. All other impacts associated with the project have been mitigated to a less than significant impact. At this time, staff recommends that the city council approve the proposed project based on the recommendations in the staff report and the findings found in the proposed resolution and ordinance. This concludes staff's presentation. We are available for any questions. Additionally, we would note that the applicant makes, wishes to make a presentation this evening as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sean, and, uh, Mr. City Attorney, for that report. That brings us next to council questions of staff. Uh, if any council members have any questions, please hit your speaker button and we'll make sure to, uh, call on you in order. And I do see a request to speak here, or actually a request for, uh, questions of staff from, uh, Mayor Protem Delgado. from Mayor Protem Delgado.
Hey, so this is basically a clarification question. David, no disrespect, sir. This is for the city attorney regarding this. It does pertain to this. If, if we vote, and this is a very important project for both the applicant and the people in the audience, right? This is a very important project. So if it comes to light that this is true about the residency, the domicile of Councilmember Marquez, and he votes tonight, will we have, his vote is null and void? And then will we have to do this again? Because I just want to clarify, just so we're moving forward in this, this process, it's for not.
The simple answer is no. The only way a council member can be removed from that diocese up there is through the quoll laurental process, which involves getting permission from the Attorney General's office to have the council member removed. So it's presumed that any council member who has not been removed has the legal authority to vote. And if they're eventually removed, it will not impact any prior decisions that involve that particular council member.
Okay, so that answers my question. If it, whatever that, that comes out, the end result of that will not affect what we do here tonight?
Correct.
Can we ask him to swear in and say he's a resident, that he's registered to vote in Moreno Valley?
And Mr. City Attorney, of course, I'll defer to your legal counsel, but I just want to clarify that what we're talking about is not on the agenda. So I want to be very careful that we're not crossing a line that we shouldn't. Definitely think we should have this discussion after the council meeting, but again, I'll defer to you as far as the conversation pertaining to this topic and us actually discussing this at this moment. Just want to make sure that we're not doing anything we shouldn't be doing right now.
I believe the Mayor Protem's comments were germane to the issue at hand. However, you're correct. This particular issue on its own is not on the agenda to be considered by the council.
Okay, thank you. And back to Mayor Protem. Did you have any further questions?
No, that clarified my question. And these guys probably drove and flew in from a long distance, and there's a lot of people here tonight sacrificing the Dodgers and Angels game, so, so I just don't want to have to redo this. And that was just my question, so, thank you.
Okay. Are there any further council questions of staff for item F2? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to the next portion of this item, which is a presentation by the applicant slash appellant. And we have here the, the appellant slash applicant at the podium. And we will per our normal procedures allocate 15 minutes for your presentation. Go right ahead, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Scott Morse. I'm with Hillwood. I want to thank you for taking the time to consider our project. The last time we were before you was December of 2021, when the council agreed to continue the project and suggested that we reconsider the project design. And so we have done that. We've spent the last 15 months listening to the community, the stakeholders, the city council, staff, and the neighbors to the south of the project to include the feedback that we got into this project's redesign. We'll present to you tonight the transformation of the project with the neighborhood's priorities in, in our minds. We've worked hard on the project redesign to reduce the traffic, the noise, air quality impacts to the community. We'll also address the community benefit package that has been mentioned here tonight in excess of $60 million. Here are some of the major redesign features. We first have reduced the building size, as Sean had mentioned in his presentation, by 65,000 square feet. That reduction reduces the environmental impacts of the project. We heard from the community that the 100-foot that we previously studied in the EIR was too high, and so we're going to restrict the building height to 60 feet. We've added the berm for additional visual and noise screening to, again, try and reduce the noise impacts to the community. And lastly, the Biden administration has made onchoring of manufacturing a priority of his administration. I know that's a priority of the council as well. So Hillwood is proposing to market to manufacturing use for the first 12 months after project We met with the, the neighbors to the south several times over the, over the life of this project, most recently on Friday night. We've incorporated all of the feedback that we've gotten from them. Some of those highlighted here, elimination of all traffic on Encelia Avenue, elimination of the truck traffic on Eucalyptus, noise-canceling mitigation measures such as ambient adjusting backup alarms for the trucks, and we've increased 179 trees over the prior plan. So we're really trying hard to, to protect the neighborhood from the noise in the trucks to the south. Here's a diagram illustrating those changes. As you can see, no, no traffic on the south side of the, of the project. We've created an internal circulation road, so trucks are going out to Eucalyptus, and only automobiles are here on the Redlands Boulevard. Here is the, the berm that's proposed, 35 feet, to completely block the view and reduce the sound. Our noise consultants are here tonight. Their initial analysis is that this noise level is reduced by an additional 26% from the previous design. And the decimal levels of 35.5 are significantly lower than the ambient levels that exist Here's a visual of the line of sight from Encelia Avenue, both from a street view and a second-story residential window. As you can see, the, the project is completely blocked from the berm. Here's a current view we took of, of the view looking towards Eucalyptus Avenue. As you can see, the warehouse is there. And then here's the proposed berm with lush landscaping to block that view. Again, the visual of today looking west on Encelia. And then here's the proposed berm to block that view. Community benefits. We are adding 22 million of community benefits to the project. The landscaping is about 2.2 million. We're excited to let you all know that we're partnering with the Kawhi Leonard team to, to bring youth programs to the community. We're proposing an 18-acre park, as, as mentioned previously. We're putting in a youth center, and we're donating $250,000 to the Kawhi Leonard Academy to help support youth programs in the community. Some of the economic benefits in addition to these, the 4.8 million in annual tax revenue, 6.5 million in one-time revenue for, to support police, fire, school, and other public services, and two donations to the Moreno Valley Community Foundation. The first is an upfront $15.5 million payment, and the second is a 1 million annually for the first 15 years of the project. And lastly, 1,500 well-paying full-time and construction jobs. We appreciate the carpenters and Launa's support here tonight. The project is going to be designed to lead Silver Certification. We're supporting the electric vehicle movement here in California with the installation of the 10 Level 1 and Level 2 vehicle chargers. Other design features include the cool roof, the drought-tolerant landscaping, and LED Something new to the proposal is the electric grant program, heavy, medium, and light-duty vehicle trucks. This is for Moreno Valley residents only, as well as two mega charger stations for the adoption of the EV trucks. So this will be developed onsite, and it'll be the first of its kind in the region. Here's a depiction of the proposed park. As you can see, there's two basketball, two, two soccer fields, two softball fields, and proposed to have basketball courts. So this was the feedback that we got from the community in terms of what is needed at the park. And lastly, a 9,000-square-foot youth center made up of classrooms, multipurpose rooms, and offices. Again, this could be used for after-school programs to support the youth in the community. And to summarize here, 1,500 jobs, 15.5 million in a one-time donation, 1 million annually for the first 15 years, new 18-acre park, a 9,000-square-foot youth center, a 250,000 Leonard, Kawhi Leonard donation, 4.8 million in tax revenue, 6.5 million in one-time city fees, grant program, Tesla mega charger station. So we are here to tell you that we are ready to invest in the city of Moreno Valley, and we appreciate your consideration. We hope, we hope we have a successful project here tonight.
That'll bring us now to questions of the applicant from the city council. If there are any questions, please hit your speaker button, and I will call on you. Seeing none, we will go ahead and proceed to the public testimony portion of item F2 for public comments on this item only. Madam Clerk, how many requests to speak do we have on this item?
We have 32 requests to speak.
Okay, thank you. So there will probably be more speakers, more requests to speak, as we saw with the public comment. We started with eight, and it grew to almost, I believe, 20. So we, we will just decrease the amount of time per speaker for this particular item there being over 30. We'll decrease it down to a minute per person for, for this, unless the council thinks that two minutes is better?
Two minutes.
Yeah. Okay. So we will decrease it to two minutes, again, just to be as respectful as possible. Since we do have a large number of speakers, we'll, we'll allocate two minutes per person for public comments on this item.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
From five to two minutes?
That is correct. And Mr. City Attorney, if you would like to just chime in, I think you earlier gave some clarification to us regarding public hearing items and the timing on this, if you would like to share, please.
So although our city's rules of procedure addresses the time limit for public testimony, unfortunately, that rule is unintelligible because if you applied that rule and reduce the time, you would only have, allow four speakers to speak, which is not consistent with due process. However, under the Brown Act, the city council is permitted, in situations where we have a large number of speakers, to reduce the amount of time down to one minute. That's, I'm just saying what the law is.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So we'll, we will proceed with two minutes per person for these public comments. Madam Clerk, if you'd like to go ahead and call up the first three speakers, please.
Okay. The first three speakers are Donovan Sadiq, followed by Alex Zamora, and then Joe Bunker.
Good evening once again. We started, there we go. Here we are with warehouses. If anybody knows how good warehouses are, it's Moreno Valley because we're antiquated with them. Now, I'm not anti-warehouse. I've never been anti-warehouse, but I, and I see both sides of it. We were promised for the Skechers 2,000 jobs, never, never materialized. We were giving all these promises, it never materialized. But we have all these warehouses. Now, the truth of the matter is this. I'm pro-union. Thanks to unions, we wouldn't have holidays and 40-hour work weeks and all that other good stuff. But the construction jobs that are going to be made to do this project is maybe good for a year. Then what? You know, what jobs are we going to bring here to Moreno Valley? Unfortunately, as we said during the WLC wars, automation is here. That's going to be the end result of what's going to happen to this warehouse. Great presentation by the presenter. It was great. I mean, I, I believe in it wholeheartedly, but there's two sides to this. And, you know, it, it's a tough, it, it really is a tough sale, especially as, for those of us that have been in Moreno Valley for a long time, and we've seen warehouses come here, and it didn't produce what it was, what we were told it was going to produce. Some did, some didn't. But again, the fact of the matter is, my fellow Moreno Valley residents, automation is here. So the more warehouses they build, eventually, it's going to be automated. So there's not going to be a lot of jobs there. The electric cars and trucks are coming. This is the future. So depending on how you decide for this, it's a tough sale. So I hope you guys do it to the best of your ability. Thanks.
The next three speakers are Alex Zamora, Joe Bunker, and Juan Sarate.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Alex Zamora, and I am a very proud member of Launa, which stands for the Labor's International Union of North America. I'm here tonight speaking in favor of the project and also of the developer. It's a very rare thing when you see how much they're willing to give back to the community when they don't have to. In terms of our union, there's three major things that we see in these types of projects that really go a long way with the men and women. Number one, it helps all the young people that are just getting into our union get very meaningful hours on the job, training hours, learning hours, very, very good hours. Secondly, the people that have been here a while sometimes have to sit on the out-of-work list every time another job finishes, and they're waiting for something like this to pop up. That's just another opportunity for them to get out there, earn the money to pay their bills, and, you know, be a productive member of society. And also, it's letting a lot more people outside of the construction industries find a way into it. Our doors are always open here. Even if you have little to no experience, there's always those training moments. It's a very, very good thing. We're going to hear a lot of stuff, so I'll wrap it up soon. But again, I really hope we can find a way to pass this. We're going to build something responsible. We're going to do it safely. We're going to do it on time, under budget, and it's going to look nice for the city. I can be sure of that. Thank you so much for the time, and thank you guys for all you do.
Next three speakers, Joe Bunker, Juan Sarato, and Al Sanchez.
Hey, guys, just real quick, we're going to be taking notes up here. So if you see us writing, it's not, we're not paying attention to the speaker. We're literally taking notes and/or doing research. We had over 500 pages of documents to review, and we have them up in our face to review. So just, just out of respect for you guys, if we're not staring at you eyeball to eyeball, that's why.
Hi, good evening. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Joe Bunker, and I represent the HOA just south of this project across the street from, on Encelia, for Valley Springs HOA. I won't go into all the technical data about this with air traffic, I mean, the traffic and the air pollution and so forth, it's been beat to death, I think. But the fact is, we're still going to be faced with it. And regardless of, I mean, the developer's done a good job of trying to meet our expectations, but at the same time, there's still, by their own admission in this environmental impact report, thousands of truck trips a day that we have to deal with. And there is going to still be noise, there is still going to be pollution, and that's going to degrade the value of our property. Page 15 of your staff report lists the city council goals, one of which has the title of "Community Image, Neighborhood Pride, and Cleanliness." It says, and I quote, "Promote a sense of community pride and foster an excellent image about our city by developing and executing programs which will result in quality development, enhance neighborhood preservation efforts, including home rehabilitation and neighborhood restoration," end quote. So how does this project enhance or, and preserve our neighborhood? How would you vote if you lived where we live? The mayor and Councilman Marquez and Delgado were ready to vote no last time. So I'm asking you just to uphold the planning commission's denial. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Juan Sarato, Al Sanchez, and Fred Bonuelos.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Juan Sarato. I am a member of the Labor's International Union of North America. Projects like the Moreno Valley Trade Center are desperately needed for our community. This project will be donating $1 million annual revenue to the Moreno Valley Community Foundation for the first 15 years of the project, totaling $15 million. They will also be donating $500,000 to the Riverside Community College Foundation to help with student housing initiatives. Also, projects like these... Also, projects like these, uh, you know, will keep our, our highly skilled and trained local, uh, members busy. Uh, this project will be paying, uh, union wages, and also workers will get, uh, union benefits. Uh, I strongly support the, uh, Moreno Valley Trade Center, and, uh, I ask you to join us in supporting this project also. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Al Sanchez, Fred Bonuelos, and Jimmy Elrod.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I've been a member for thirty-eight years. Um, I've worked San Diego, down the street, Riverside, all over. I remember when I first, uh, started doing water, water filtration plants, um, people didn't want them around. When we started doing sewer treatment plants, people didn't want them around. Water plants, people didn't want them around. We're, we're growing all the time, um, we can't stop it, so we have to keep building so we can make it comfortable for all of us to, to live. We have also another saying is, I was looking for a job when I found this job. You're building stuff, it's gonna end. We build it right, and like everyone says, we get, we get a good wage, we get a good pension, a good, uh, annuity, and we're just asking if you let our brothers and sisters build this so all of us can live a little better. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Fred Bonuelos, Jimmy Elrod, and Shane Yoss.
I remember when, uh, Mayor, Mayor Ed Delgado, Mayor Elicia Cabrera, and Councilmember David Marquez said on, uh, December seventh, twenty twenty-one. I remember at city, uh, events, the councilmember Elena Baca Santa Cruz told us, told the people there, "Tell us your concerns, we are here for you." Another developer has, uh, new enhancements, I would love an enhancement from the developer to protect our kids that go to school in Moreno Valley. One armed security police officer at every school, too much security should be the norm in Moreno Valley. Each warehouse project should be based on its own merits. Have there been any denied in Moreno Valley? This one should be denied. You know what shouldn't be the norm? Too many warehouses near people's forever homes. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Jimmy Elrod, Shane Yoss, and Richard Marino.
Hey, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Jimmy Elrod, and I'm a representative for the Southwest Mountain State's Regional Council of Carpenters. On behalf of the roughly nine hundred members that I have the honor to represent that live within your city, I'm here to speak on item F2 pertaining to the Moreno Valley Trade Center. The carpenters with me here today are working men and women from this community. These are your constituents who, on the regular, make long-distance commutes to other counties for job opportunities. This is their reality, and one that is taxing not only financially, but also mentally, as this prevents them from being more engaged with their families, and more importantly, uh, their, their community. Uh, the project before you would create a significant number of local jobs for our members, which would help improve the quality of life for them and their, their families. This is important to us. Also, this project, if approved, would provide a tremendous investment into the community in the form of the many great benefits which were illustrated in the applicant's presentation. Hillwood has gone the extra mile and proven that they will undoubtedly have the community's best interest in mind by addressing the many concerns expressed about their project, and by offering so many or so much in the terms of true community benefits. We respectfully ask that you take all these, uh, factors into consideration, and as your staff recommends, vote yes in approving this great project. Thank you for your time.
Next three speakers are Shane Yoss, Richard Marino, and Arlene Sims.
Uh, Shani Sias with the Center for Community Action and Environmental Justice and Sierra Club. And I just wanna take a second to step back and look at this crowd and understand that everyone here wants the same thing, in the fact that we all wanna have good jobs, good health, and sustainability to live here in Moreno Valley. And unfortunately, I do not think that this project goes far enough to help our community. As stated before, the EIR has blatantly said that there's, and, oh, we cannot mitigate the air pollution. So we see this investment into parks and playgrounds and hiking trails, but we, but we live in a community that continues to contribute to an asthma rate that's seventy percent higher than the national average. How can we honestly look at ourselves and, and continue to push for something that's so poisonous to our community? You know, I'm, I'm a brand-new father, I have two under two, and I actually have to rush back because my partner's sick and she's taking care of them right now. And all I want is to take care of the problem now so I don't give it to them later. You know, I, I, I try my hardest, and I think that I'm a good dad, but I would be remiss if I didn't look at this project and think this is not good for their health. And I think that should be the most important thing. I think we shouldn't stop putting public health at the bottom of the totem pole and start putting it in a place that we can continue sustainably. You know, I, I, I try to reason with myself because, to be perfectly honest, some of the, uh, additions to the project look nice, but that's not what our city needs right now. Our city needs public health, our city needs to take a stand, and our city needs to be more progressive in this area, and that's why I urge you to uphold the appeal.
The next three speakers are Richard Marino, Arlene Sims, and Joe Flores.
Hello, my name is Richard Marino. I've been in the neighborhood south of Encelia for about twenty-four years approximately. Only thing I'm asking for is to vote no against this project. Don't ruin it for myself, that's a life house for me. I've been there all, I mean, a long time since my kids were, grew, they grew up there, they were born there, grew up there, just don't ruin it for us and the fellow neighbors. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Arlene Sims, Joe Flores, and Jeff Sims.
Honorable Mayor, council persons, my name is Arlene Sims, and I live in the neighborhood directly south of this project. Vote no on this project because it adds daily traffic up to five thousand cars, eight hundred and fifty trucks directly in our neighborhood. It adds diesel soot and toxins to the air we breathe, adds noise and trucks using, trucks using the one hundred and seventeen loading docks two hundred and fifty feet from our homes. This is our forever home. I've lived there longer than Richard, he's our neighbor, we love him. So, and my grandchildren, I loved the neighborhood so much, we, we bought another house next door. So my grandchildren that are here to speak can talk about, uh, can, they, they came to live next to us because it's, it's beautiful. And this project is, looks beautiful, but still, you guys don't live there. Our community, it's our community. We just want you to keep it safe from all these cars and people that are gonna be going through our streets. I just wish you to know, know for this project, know, thank you.
The next three speakers are Joe Flores, Jeff Sims, and Julian Flores.
Honorable Mayor and council persons, my name is Joe Flores. I live in the neighborhood directly south of this project. I ask you to vote no. Why? It adds five thousand cars, eight hundred and fifty trucks on a daily basis around our, about our homes. It adds a lot of diesel soot in the air for my children and I to breathe. I will also add the noise, the trucks twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, using a hundred and seventeen loading docks facing our homes. We will see a thirty-five-foot berm on the building bigger than Moreno Valley Mall instead of the mountains that we normally get to see. The city has a two thousand eight hundred acre land with the World Logistics Center for this type of project. The World, the, the World Logistics Center is supposed to start construction this year, will provide construction and warehouse jobs for decades. Hillwood is attempting to buy your vote for this project in the wrong place. Hillwood won't live next to it, only profit from it. The labor unions who support this project today will be at some other city council tomorrow, supporting a different project. They don't live here, they only profit from it. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Jeff Sims, Julian Flores, and Robert Rodriguez.
Hello, again. Uh, Jeff Sims, uh, you're, I just says a little bit of history, you're, you're planning commission not only denied this, unanimously denied this project on a variety of reasons, um, and it's basically because of its inability to mitigate the harm that it will have on the city. At the appeal in December twenty twenty-one, three of the councilpersons voiced strong concerns. They said it's a great project, but in the wrong location. The location has not changed, there still is the negative impacts. Only a lifeline by then, uh, Gutierrez saved having a vote that day. Who knows how the vote would have actually gone, but it looked like, he said, Gutierrez said, "It looks like there's no support for this project," and threw a lifeline, and here we are tonight. The project continues to fail to mitigate its negative impacts, it states this plainly in the EIR, it is, even says it in the staff report that you, that you were given by your staff to read tonight. So the question comes down, and you're gonna be asked to adopt a resolution to make a finding of an overriding consideration. So what's the overriding consideration? The harm's still there, it's money. So, uh, it, it's, it's mind-boggling. The city has, the city charges, uh, development impact fees, and unilaterally, this developer is opening a checkbook to write sixty million dollars. How does that happen? How was it five hundred thousand fifteen months ago, and now it's sixty billion? Incredible. Stop it. Vote no on this, this is a money grab. Please, thank you.
The next three speakers are Julian Flores, Robert Rodriguez, and Tammy Farum.
My name is Julian Flores. My home is very close to where this project is planned to be built, and I'm against it, it being built. My generation will have to live with your decision, so please don't make bad ones. This project will cause more air pollution for our city, which makes all of us will have to, which all of us will have to breathe. It will be worse for people like me who have to live right next to it. The project will cause more traffic, making it harder for my parents to get to work and back. This makes less time for them to spend time with me and my brother. With all the talk about climate change and global warming, it does not make sense to me why you would want to approve this project that adds more to the problem right next to my home. Vote no, thank you.
The next three speakers, Robert Rodriguez, Tammy Farum, and Jason Baze.
Mr. Robert Rodriguez, are you, uh, are you still here? If not, we can, uh, go on to the next speaker, and if, um, Mr. Rodriguez comes up, we, we'll make sure to get back to him. Uh, so we'll, we'll go ahead and proceed with Ms. Tammy Farum.
Hello, city council and mayor, I was not prepared to talk, it was sort of a spur-of-the-moment thing. Um, I've lived in Moreno Valley thirty years, I lived on, I live on the east side of town. At the time I moved there, there was a horse ranch in Orange Groves, it was beautiful there. I understand that we have to embark on new enterprises to build up our community, but there's plenty of room on the other side of Redlands Boulevard on the east side where no homes are. Why can't they go there? Um, I'm also very concerned in the mornings when I leave for work at six forty-five to turn left onto Redlands Boulevard from Encelia, it, there's a lot of backed-up traffic going into the canyon, which I drive every morning, and it's, it takes about an hour to get to Redlands every day, a fourteen-mile stretch. So I would just like you to consider our home. Um, we love our home, we love our community, it's just beautiful there, and this is our forever home, and we would like the air we breathe to be nice and clean. The project has improved in what they were going to, um, allow us to see from the backside, we do appreciate that, but please consider, these are our homes, and I know people need jobs, I'm a union member as well, but this is our home that we are living in and we will be staying in. It's not just a job. I need my job, like I said, I'm a union supporter, but please take into consideration the families that love their homes and want to stay in a forever home in Moreno Valley. Thank you for listening.
The next three speakers are Jason Baze, Omar Kobian, and Chrysanthia Tom.
Honorable counsel, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jason Baze, and I'm a proud member of Labor's International Union of North America, and I fully support this project, as this applicant has went to the very furthest length possible to ensure that this facility is built to the highest standard by employing hands-down the world's greatest workforce there is, skilled, trained, certified, American union craftsmen, as we have state-of-the-art facilities where our members can come in and acquire over a hundred certifications of safety and training to fulfill their tasks efficiently and as safely as possible, which further gives me more appreciation to this applicant, as they have graciously made so many contributions to our youth, with the Youth Complex Center, all the finances they're gonna donate to youth programs, as our union works in correlation with over a hundred, easily, easily over a hundred youth programs throughout California. We make our presence known, and the fact that youth can come to us and be trained from the floor up and acquire a, a lifelong, um, uh, career in union construction, which will enable them to buy a home here in Moval and have benefits to raise a family sufficiently. Thank you so much.
The next three speakers are Omar Kobian, Chrysanthia Tom, and Douglas Tom.
Good evening, council members, uh, mayor and staff, my name is Omar Kobian, I'm a representative for the carpenters' union. I stand before you representing over five thousand members that live in the city of Riverside, I mean, in Riverside County, and over eight hundred that live right here in Moreno Valley. Some of our members were here today with their spouses and their kids to show support for the Moreno Valley Trade Center. I'm not only a representative for the carpenter, but I actually live a block away from this project. I live on Dracia and Redlands. So for the residents that live on the south, I am tired of seeing Redlands in disarray, that road, I wish, I would like to see that filled in, I would like to see the, the decrepit nursery gone, so I would like to see a better view myself, coming from somebody that lives there, and I've been there for nine years, and that is my forever home. I've invested tons of money in my home, so. As a resident in the area, I feel that the added improvements that the developer has added is far above more than any other project has ever come before this hiatus, with the much-needed road repair, the new proposed park with the youth center, not to mention the millions of dollars that Moreno Valley Community Foundation would receive. As a carpenter and a construction worker, our industry relies on projects like this. These products put food on our table, they pay the bills, they provide healthcare and a good living wage. Most importantly, they provide local products to provide opportunity for workers to work close to home. That means being able to make your daughter's red ants recital, that means being able to be at your son's baseball game. This developer has made a commitment to ensure that they are hiring responsible contractors that pay the areas' standard wages. For this product to be helped, put hundreds of local construction workers closer to home. In closing, I would like to thank, uh, the city of Moreno Valley for bringing these great projects to the city. I would also like to thank you, uh, council members and the mayor for your time and your consideration for approving this project.
The next three speakers are Chrysanthia Tom, Douglas Tom, and John Daniels.
Um, good evening, I'd like to thank you for your service to our city. Um, I'm speaking tonight because I'm opposed to the Moreno Valley Trade Center. Uh, my husband left tonight, he said it was a waste of my time, of his time and my time to be here to speak, that the council has already made up their minds, regardless of what the homeowners would say. I don't wanna believe that. I just can't believe that the council would think it's a good idea to put a warehouse right across from our homes. I'm living in my dream home, I just never thought it would be a stone's throw away from a warehouse. If the city were planning on putting shops, stores, restaurants there in our, on the east side, I wouldn't be here tonight. Let's see. Um, I also have a request. Let's see. I also have a request as far as the Moreno Valley Trade Center building and their park. I would like them to also pay for the maintenance fees, because to build the park, it is going to be up to the taxpayers to maintain the parks and the buildings, and I'm already going to live next, pay $12,000 to live next to a warehouse. I don't want to pay any more taxes. So it's my hope that you will take my concerns into consideration and prove my husband wrong. Thank you.
Next three speakers, Douglas Tom, John Daniels, and Russell Schaefer.
And I believe Mr. Tom has, has left, as his wife mentioned, so we'll go ahead and move on to John Daniels. Mr. John Daniels, are you still here? If not, we'll come back to you as well. Next speaker we have is Mr. Russell Schaefer.
Yeah, I mentioned the Angel Game, and he left.
Yeah, let me just reiterate a little bit about this project. It's not a money grab or a power grab. It's not an enhancement, and it's not... The pursuant to Senate Bill 330, Trade Center will not result in loss of residential capacity. I would ask my city council to consider all revisions made to this project, revisions that are all positives. Reduced by 65,582 square feet. South side loading docks reduced by four to 117. North side loading docks reduced by seven to 97. Trailer spaces reduced by 10 to 228. Passenger parking spaces reduced by 86 to 228. No driveways on Encelia Avenue. Floor elevation of building will be reduced, which reduce perceived height of building. 35-foot-tall Ethan berm, densely landscaped trees, shrubs, and ground cover between southern boundary and Encelia Avenue. Truck access limited to Eucalyptus Avenue. Port chop curb to prevent access from Redlands Boulevard. Traffic signals from Redlands Boulevard and Northern driveway. Water quality, detention basin on southwest corner of project. New community benefits. Donation $1 million in annual revenue in Moreno Valley Community Foundation for first 15 years. That is $15 million per year. Building height 60 feet maximum. Market to manufacturing only the first
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
900 square feet, community use.
The next three speakers are Alberto Velasco, Carlos Seja, and Kia Kerr.
Alberto Velasco, are you still here with us? If not, we will move on to Carlos Seja. Mr. Seja, are you here with us? Okay, we'll move on to Kia Kerr.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Kia Kerr. I live on Mozart Way, part of the original 64 houses that were put out there. Back in 1994, we moved in. Been dirt, dirt around us for a long time. That's part of nature. So we understand progress. Things happen. I was part of the carpenters, 2375, 15 and a half years. I understand construction comes in, construction leaves. Now, currently, I work for a different jurisdiction, part of the Teepsters now, so still part of the union. But so I understand, jobs, we need jobs. Everybody needs jobs. So some of the concerns, mainly about the traffic, I did see that they removed the entrances onto Encelia. You know, the berm to hide everything. There was, it looked like sort of, at one time, there were some walking paths that would have led to parking on Encelia. So preferred to have maybe Encelia not be allowed to be parking at all, because otherwise we'll have trucks there. We already have cars that park there that shouldn't have no purpose of being there, parking in the dark areas on the street. There's no houses that actually go to that street, so there's no reason for them to be there, but they're already there, so. Promises in the past that we expect, we experienced with Skechers. Supposed to be residential between our houses and what was supposed to be shopping center up at the freeway. Now it's Aldis. And now the residential that's supposed to be between us is now going to be a warehouse. There were supposed to be no truck traffic on Redlands Boulevard. There's supposed to be a big bar going across the road that did not allow trucks to leave the Skechers to go on Redlands Boulevard. Now it's wide open. The landscaping, they had a beautiful presentation. Guess what? They said it'd take a little bit of time. We're still
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kerr.
The next three speakers are Jeremy Horvath, Mike McCarthy, and Socorro Velasco.
Good evening, city council members. I'm a longtime resident of Moreno Valley. Excuse me. I moved to the east side of town in 1999, and I purchased my first home in 2016, so. I'm going to read from an article that I've been reading through the last couple of weeks. The inland empire is filled with millions of square feet of warehouses, and it's primarily for distribution to the rest of the country. This region may be booming with some, but it comes at a high price. The environmental impact of these mammoth buildings and the millions of trucks that traverse the region's roads to and from the ports. Living here, you and I both face this, this problem. Breathing, breathing is some of the worst smog in the nation. Data from the American Lung Association shows it. And on every, any given day, when the Santa Ana winds haven't come and blown it all away, you could literally see the brown haze polluting, hanging over the local valleys. Most of the population, or most of the pollution is big rig exhaust. At any given time, semi-trucks are traversing local streets and freeways, making their way to and from the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach, and it's bad. Using a mapping tool called Warehouse City that was developed to track the progress of the region's warehouses, it shows that there are over 4,000 warehouses in the region with a total footprint of 1.5 billion square feet. Running between these warehouses are half, excuse me, are half a million daily big rig trips choking the air with pollution. What's worse, 300 of these warehouses are within 1,000 feet of nearly 140 schools. Getting down to specific cities shows that some areas are far worse and some areas are, are slightly better.
Thank you.
The next three speakers are Mike McCarthy, Socorro Velasco, and Tom Gerald Senior.
Good evening, council members, mayor. First, I'd like to give kudos to the people of Moreno Valley. You're, I'm a member of Riverside Neighbors opposing warehouses, and your city meetings are way, way better than ours. Ours suck in terms of the vibe. You guys do it right. This is democracy, and I, it's messy, but it's the way it's done, and I think you guys do a great job. Please reject the proposal for the Moreno Valley Trade Center. There are two bills in the state assembly that have already been discussed, AB 1000 by Reyes. It's a 1,000-foot setback from 100,000-square-foot warehouses. This warehouse would be prohibited under that bill. There's AB 1748 by Ramos. It requires a 300-foot setback from 400,000-square-foot warehouses. This warehouse will be prohibited under that legislation. So, you know, if it wouldn't pass either of the bills that are currently under discussion, maybe the Moreno Valley, you know, city council could do a little bit better than the laws that are being considered in the state legislature right now. Additionally, the EIR for this particular trade center was completed two years ago, and it's deficient as to the number of warehouses that have come in the last two years. Within a 10-mile radius of this project, there are currently the following projects that are in proposal. Legacy Highlands Phase 2 Specific Plan in Beaumont, 1,386 acres, 18 million square feet. Stone Ridge Commerce Center in Nuevo, draft EIR complete, that's right here. That's 9 million square feet. West Campus Upper Plateau, that's where I live, over here. That's 4.7 million square feet. Beaumont Point in Beaumont, draft EIR complete, that's 5 million square feet. That's over here. Okay, Petraero Logistics, Beaumont, that's under construction, 2.7 million square feet. Oak Valley Town Center in Calamasa, draft EIR complete, 2.5 million square feet. Interchange Logistics Center 2 in Beaumont, that's 1.7 million square feet. That's about 30,000 truck trips cumulatively. Most of those are going to be on State Route 60 or on 215. Okay, all of those are going to go to the 215-60 interchange. They're all going to merge, and we already know how bad it is right there right now. So please consider your vision for the future. What is this area going to look like? Thank you for your time.
The next three speakers are Socorro Velasco, Tom Gerald Senior, and Monica Zedina.
Socorro Velasco, are you, are you still here? If not, we will move on to Tom Gerald Senior.
Tom Gerald Senior, again, speaking on behalf of myself, mayor, mayor pro tem, council members, and the public. Thank you for the opportunity. As I said, this is democracy in action. You know, first of all, I want to compliment our city attorney for, I thought, a very, again, super dissertation on, you know, how the laws apply, and I really thank him for that. Good to have that kind of clarity before we can end up the project like this. This project is not going to generate the truck trips everybody says, because they're already here. Meaning, if it doesn't go here, this building will be built somewhere else, maybe in Beaumont, Banning might be to the west of us, but the trucks are going to be going through us, but we won't get the benefits. Tough decision, because this was a, it's a residential area. I don't fault the people that live there. I don't live there, so I, you know, I'm, don't have the first-person vision. I even know some of the people that are speaking against the project. But what I did want to share, a number of years ago, we had to go to a function in Rancho Cucamonga. I came in off a foot hill. I can't, I was going north, and I kind of got lost, and, but I like to look at development patterns and stuff, and I went through a heavy industrial area. Now, not an ugly industrial, it was very well-done, but it was all, I assume warehouses, maybe some light manufacturing, but it was definitely industrial buildings. And when I came out of that, all of a sudden, literally right next door was gobs of really beautiful houses. In fact, their community center was there, which was very upscale. That's where I was headed. And so you can't have compatibility. It all depends on implementation. And, you know, I like the berm. I think this developer's gone way above and beyond what many people would. And in closing, but the one thing I would change, I would ask for two years to try and get those jobs in manufacturing here. I think that's a fair situation. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Monica Zedina, Bianca Blua, and Robert Palomeros.
Monica Zedina, are you still here? Monica Zedina? Okay, we will proceed with Bianca Blua.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Is Moreno Valley considered a healthy city? Do we improve the physical and social levels until environmental and health conditions are reached to establish an acceptable morbidity rate for the population? Not if we continue to build warehouses. Warehouses increases air and noise pollution and decrease home values. There are already over 1 billion square feet of warehouses in San Bernardino and Riverside Counties. We should be investing in affordable housing, not warehouses. According to an article in the Desert Sun on March 23rd, "These untenable land use decisions permanently eliminate prime real estate from home construction and bring in pollution that poisons the air for those who remain." "Each warehouse approval becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy, leading to uncontrollable warehouse sprawl." "Please don't use the argument that warehouses provide jobs. The majority of warehouse jobs are hard, part-time work with no benefits. Entry-level manufacturing jobs are not much better at $17 to $20 an hour. This is not the type of job to raise a family on. Building more homes instead of warehouses will bring goods and services and more jobs, more small businesses, which will bring a more sustainable economy." "Please vote no on the Moreno Valley Trade Center."
Next three speakers are Robert Palomeros, Christopher Baca, and David Zeitz.
They changed my name from Bob to Robert, so. I'm in favor of this project. You know, I keep hearing about the truck traffic, which, when, before they built Skechers, and the people that were against it, they said it was going to be thousands of trucks daily. Haven't seen them. And then people are saying about Mr. Mike McCarthy, you know, he's against warehouses. I guess he wasn't too pretty good, successful, because on Riverside, they're all over. I mean, the 215 freeway, and right here, the old Highway 215, they're building them, and they're going all the way down. So, you know, we're not, like Tom Gerald says, we're getting, we're not going to get any of the benefits, monetary benefits, from all these that are built around us, but we're getting their pollution. If that's the case, you know, California has the most stringent laws in the state, in the country. You know, so I understand these people that live on the east end that are opposing this, but when we move here and you see a lot of empty land around you, you know something's going to go there. So, you know, sometimes you got to bite the bullet. I mean, I live up on Manzanita in Paris, and when I moved in, there weren't even no birds around. Now, all the traffic that's going through there, it's amazing, but hey, that's part of it. I go out my front door, I look down towards the 215, and I can see all of the logistics that are on the other side of the 215. That's the way it goes. You know, they're going to build something there, and they say, well, you know, they don't, these jobs don't pay anything. Well, my grandsons
Thank you.
The next three speakers are Christopher Baca, David Zeitz, and George Hague.
I just wanted to point out some of the implications on warehousing or logistics, and I really think it's a, the incentives to build, for the city, to build this project are phenomenal. The soccer fields, we really need soccer fields in the city. It's one of the biggest sports, and we don't have enough soccer fields, and the corner of Redlands and Ironwood would benefit from having that park there, a youth center. That berm is amazing. I mean, considering what you have right now, you have the view of those, all those warehouses, and if they don't build that one, they're going to build apartment buildings, and you'll have a lot of apartment buildings there. And on that aspect, I would, I would consider, be careful what you wish for if you're wanting apartment buildings built in that area, because you'll have the overwhelming traffic jams and people going into that neighborhood from that, from those neighborhoods. But as far as asthma, you know, most of the asthma is considered by, you know, household paints, household florings, pesticides. How many residents there use Roundup? You know, it's also a lot of pet dander. A lot of people, you know, have their animals in their homes, and that, that's what causes asthma. As far as air quality is concerned, I would suggest that CCEJ start working on getting, shutting down that Air Force Base with all those aircrafts that are polluting the air. Those are unregulated. Tons and tons of smog that's falling in our city from the, from the Air Force Base. Further out, we have the big rigs, the big tankers. Those are the major pollutants of this Southern California. That air comes straight into the LA Basin and gets trapped over here. That's where all the pollution's coming from. Thank you.
The next three speakers are David Zeitz, George Hague, and Pete Blackard.
Good evening. Last time we were here, it looked like what was going to happen is the project was going to be voted down. Our mayor at that time brought up finances. He made a statement, "Oh, they've spent too much money on this project. We're going to continue it." continue it. Maybe not in those exact words, but that was the indication. Dang, I wish I could get money back for all my lottery tickets. I mean, they are taking a chance when they come in here and ask for zoning changes and other things that are different from our general plan. It's a gamble. Sometimes they win, sometimes they lose. I hope they lose this one. With all of the changes they have made, still does not make this a good project for this area. They're building a good project, just not next to homes. Find a spot where you're farther away. You know, they have all the extra incentives. And like the kids say in the park, when they walk through where a dog has been, you sprinkle a little grass over the top of it, you still step in it, it's still going to stick to your shoe. That's all these incentives are doing. They're trying to cover it up. And please, please, do not accept this. Give up some children's health to have other children be able to play soccer someplace else. You have to consider all the children in the area and all the residents. If you approve this, you're telling everybody in that neighborhood, they don't matter. Thank you.
The next three speakers are George Hague, Pete Blackard, and Michelle Davis.
Good evening. Before your vote, to uphold the planning commission's unanimous denial, make sure you know what button to push. Since the city staff and majority of the city council has never denied a warehouse, developers believe they can place their projects anywhere, and it will be approved. Tonight will be the big test to see if Moreno Valley is truly for sale. All of the millions they promised in their April 13th letter have nothing to do with reducing the project's impacts on the neighborhood or the environment. If you approve this project on cheap land, zone for homes, next to an existing family neighborhood, and adjacent empty land, zone for homes, then you're telling developers they can put a warehouse anywhere they want, as long as they pay you millions of dollars. And I say "you" because only people, the only people who can vote on millions promised to the Moreno Valley Community Foundation is the five of you. If you accept the sports park next to a city-designated truck route, which the city's own warehouse "good neighbor" policy and the developer's own air quality analysis says is a sensitive receptor, you're going to endanger those children's health. If you accept the sports park, then you, then those who use it are doing so at the expense of those families' health, who will be forced to live next to this massive warehouse and where they cannot enjoy, even enjoy their backyards because of health impacts. During that December meeting that people referred to, one council member summed things up like the following. He said, "You will have people who will live by the project forever, and hopefully will make it their forever home. So I feel this project could have been located in another area where the entire neighborhood would not be affected in the long term. Children living in the neighborhood will take their first driving test in this neighborhood."
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hague. Mr. Hague? Thank you. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Pete Blackard, Michelle Davis, and Luis Palomeros.
Well, I support the project, but I'll talk you away it is. I hear all these people get up here and tell me how bad the weather was, and how polluted this ground was. I was here a long time before they were here. They came here and polluted my air. Did I have a right to tell them to get the hell out? No. They came right on here and polluted mine. Roy is old enough to retire, early retirement, so that goes to show you how long he's been here. And it didn't seem to bother him. He's just as healthy as me. And as far as running them big rigs, I've been on them caterpillars for over 40 years. And I sat here, and exhaust was there, and I breathed that every day for 40 years. I hope, it must be damn good and healthy, because look at me. You can't, I see others walking up here, they're younger than me, and they don't look too damn good. So I'm not worried about it. If you think that stuff kills you, then why did you move here? Because when I was here, nobody was here. It was a lot of fun. So you polluted my air, but you didn't want me to tell you to get the hell out. So, but you want to tell everybody else to get the hell out because you were here. I'm going to tell you what I said when I was on the planning commission. When you came to here, there was a yellow line on this side of the road, and you drove out here, and you thought it was paradise, or you came from paradise. So if it's so damn bad here, turn around, get that yellow line on this side of the road, and go the hell back to paradise.
Next three speakers, Michelle Davis, Luis Palomeros, and Roy Blackard.
Good evening, mayor, and the rested officials in the body. So, I sat in here, and I was saying to myself, now, I am the founder of an organization called A Better You. My motto is, "Why waste their life when you can build one?" I had the opportunity to go sit and meet the executive director of Rising Star. And so, as we sat there and we was talking, we were speaking about what will we, she has, what is it? An academy working with youth, getting an education to get a high school diploma. I have a mentoring program, working with youth, and every day I say to myself, where am I going to send them where they can have an opportunity to thrive? What are we going to do versus having them a space to come in to get away from everyday life, but when they leave, they have to resort back to not having a job? When I'm going to the gas station, I see all these youth that are going to be coming to my program, out there wiping windows. Can I wash? Can I pump your gas? And these youth need somewhere to go to have an opportunity to have a job, an opportunity where they can put food on their table. We talk about crime, this is a way to cut down crime. Giving these youth and parents an opportunity to wake up and know that they can have a job in the city where they live. And I heard a lot of people complain about dispensaries and liquor stores. I would much rather see the youth going into a trade center than going to the dispensaries, going to the liquor stores, looking for a way out of life and dealing with the reality. But if they have the opportunity to have a trade center, it's not just about a warehouse. This is about a trade center that's going to offer opportunities for families to be able to pay their bills, for their kids to have an opportunity to have somewhere to go so that they can be effective in life.
The next two speakers are Luis Palomeros and Roy Blackard.
Luis Palomeros, community activist. Well, like I said earlier, we got dispensaries here. George Hague, he lives high on the hill, and he doesn't care about the minorities. I mean, everybody in that side of town, because I said I got 40-plus over there, kids, grandkids, great-grandkids, nieces and nephews. Now, saying all that, they live there. I mean, they're okay. We all came from LA County where all the ports were. We're still alive and well. You know, I mean, my forever house, I got kids that got forever houses there, that live down the street there. They're going to bring a lot of good things to the community. Like the last speaker said, we need this, and we'd be damn fools if we don't vote for it. I hope we do. I hope and pray we do. We don't do something stupid here today. Sorry if I offended anybody. But the carpenters' union, they're here. I got grandsons that, you know, they're carpenters. They started off in the unions, and they're still with the unions on the, when they come in and they train them and teach them, and wow, this is great for our city. There's only one more thing you could put there, is that one building. Oh, the hypocrites here today, George and his pal right here, I forget his name, they're saying, oh, keep it the way it was, the general plan, build houses. Wait a minute, isn't that hypocrisy? There's three buildings there already. Build houses? What do you, which way do you want it? Well, if you want 800 apartment buildings, and you're going to have thousands and thousands and thousands of cars, they're going down all the streets there, not just one in the front, the trucks will be doing an eucalyptus. They're going to be going down every street there. They'll be crying, like, like one speaker said, watch out what you wish for, because that's what's going to come. That's what's going to come. Good luck. Good luck. You'll really be crying the blues then. So, this is a win-win for our city. We got to get it. We got, I mean, you know, what else is going to go there but one more building? That's it. That's all you can put there, except you put houses, the hypocrisy. Houses, or, or...
Thank you.
The final speaker is Roy Blackard.
You have a one-time, unique opportunity, correct or wrong, that's went on in this community for 37 years. So you said 25 million was hijacked out of the Barrio of Edgemont to redevelop that, and we were lied to by former people that sat in that dais and sat in that well, who told us we were conspiracy theories, didn't know what we were talking about, and then they admitted we were right. We could have fixed that back then. We could have fixed Edgemont. We could have put the water company on the road to making that development, so it doesn't look like it is today. You want to talk about, everybody talks, you know, all you on the East End, your houses are still going to be nice, but the pavement ends on Brill Road. You ought to drive through it every day. You ought to do, you have this, and if you condition this project, or you condition the money to go to fix that, then 100%, you should thank your lucky stars that Hillwood come in here and put this development up, and then made this hyper generous offer. You know World Logistics Center, 40 million square feet, this is about a million? You want to know what that 30 million would be if it was per square foot at World Logistics Center? Over a billion dollars. That's how much impact they're willing to invest in Moreno Valley. You have a choice. You have a choice to really help those that cannot help themselves. You have a, and even put more union jobs actually fixing the infrastructure down in that area. Condition this project for the money to go there, pass it, and let's build a better future for this city, and everyone deserves a high quality of life.
That concludes public comment, mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you to all of our public speakers. Before we continue to the applicant rebuttal, we're going to take a just short five-minute break, and when we come back, we'll continue with the rebuttal. Okay, thank you, everyone. We are back from our recess. We will now resume, pick up where we left off, which was the applicant rebuttal. We are done now with the public testimony portion, so we will have a rebuttal here from the applicant. And we will, just to be consistent, we'll give 15 minutes if necessary. I don't know if you'll need the full time.
I won't need that, but I appreciate it. I just want to address a couple of comments that we heard, Mayor and Council. The first, I wanted to address the maintenance of the park. So the project will be paying for the maintenance of the park, or being through a CFD. So just wanted to address that. Also, I heard a couple comments about how the project doesn't stand on its own. And so we think the project does stand on its own, specifically for traffic and noise, which are below the levels of significance. And we redirected the traffic, as I presented earlier. So the project redesign has improved. The traffic has improved the noise. It's below the current levels that exist today. So we are excited about the project. We're excited to bring the investment to the city of Moreno Valley. We really look forward to bringing the economic and community benefits, $60 million, to the residents of Moreno Valley. And we're committed to that. So we appreciate your consideration. We want to thank staff for their efforts tonight. So thank you for everything you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us now to council deliberation. If desired, please go ahead and hit your speaker button if you would like to deliberate, make any comments on this particular item, and make sure to call on you. Okay, we have a request to speak here from Mayor Protem Delgado.
So yes, this is our third hearing, I guess you'd call it, our meeting on this. And I do appreciate everyone coming out. And like Mr. Gerald said, Tom Gerald, he said it very eloquently that this is a great example of our democracy. This room was full earlier this evening for the presentations, but it stayed full for this project. So approved or not, the city of Moreno Valley, I think everybody was very cordial tonight. There's a lot of differences. That's okay. But that's our democracy, and I appreciate it. Especially the two groups that came out, Launa and the Carpenters. They are the backbone of our industries, our trade industry. So I thank you guys for getting involved. You guys are hard-working Americans, and that we truly appreciate that. This project is a great project with a lot of community benefits. And I was told earlier, our dais, our group was told, not earlier tonight, but earlier in the year, that we need about $2 billion to make Moreno Valley where we want Moreno Valley to be. And to see something like this, boy, what our staff can do with 30 to 60 million dollars. And Brian's shaking his head, like he has a lot of plans for it already, right? But again, and I do believe in jobs, and any job is a good job. I truly believe that. You tell that lady that was homeless here earlier in January that a job is not a good job. Or who are we to say that a warehouse job is not a good job? I've told you guys my story and my family, and we started coming up from a warehouse job, Target Western Distribution Center in Fontana. So I do appreciate what they do bring to families and what they can bring to families. But, as I indicated in past meetings, the project is amazing, and they did a really good job. They're offering a lot of positive things for our city. But I still believe it is in the wrong place. That piece of land is vacant, and it's not going to be vacant forever. But I... This is one person's vote, or my feeling is that it doesn't have to be that. But again, I'll respect whatever the council, the majority of the council, decides up here tonight. I will respect that, even though, even if it's something that I truly disbelieve, just like AB 742. I absolutely, wholeheartedly disagree with that. And I hope it doesn't pass. And I'm doing anything I can to make that not pass. But if it passes, and we're part of that process, I'll accept it. It is what it is. So just like this project, whatever we decide up here tonight, it's going to affect a lot of people, and I take that responsibility wholeheartedly. But I just don't think that it's in the right spot. So this is my comments.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Shaylinda Bernard.
I too would like to thank everyone that came up to speak tonight on both sides. I would like to thank Launa, as well as the Carpenters, for coming up here. And so just for transparency purposes, I just want to put this out there. I am a proud union member. I sit up here as an executive board member and vice president of my own local, SEIU 721. And I wear many hats. And today, as much as I understand we want good jobs, and I understand the need for good jobs, and I've had these conversations, the hat that I wear tonight is one of being a steward for the residents of the city of Moreno Valley. And I've been to the location. This project in another area for me is fine. I have to put myself in a position of, while I'm looking at this project, not only on its merits, is this a project I want next to my children? Because the truth is, once this project is built, which is what my Carpenters are going to do, which is what Launa's going to do, and they move on, those residents still have to be there. And I have to think about it from that perspective. And that's how I go about everything that I do as a social worker. Is this how I want my grandmother treated? Is this how I want my uncle treated? And so for me, I see all the community agreements and benefits that we're going to get from this, but I also have to be a good steward of the people who, even though it's not my district, have come to us and have told us their grievances with this project. And it's one thing to convert it from industrial, from, I'm sorry, from commercial to industrial. We are converting, we're being asked to convert this from residential to industrial. And one point, four, five, whatever it is, million square foot is a lot of warehouse. And before anyone asks, how do I know? Because I have a warehouse that's near my house, that's directly across the street from the school that my children are zoned to go to. And those are the things that I have to think about. So when someone writes me, "Would you want this next year?" No, but we have one. We have one that I wish wasn't there. I wish when the city of Moreno Valley, that just approved their general plan, had actually just fixed it in the general plan, then there wouldn't be this conversation of an amendment coming forward. So I think going forward, we need to figure out the type of city we want to be. We need to think about our residents, because they're not asking us for much. And I get all of the benefits, and you know, I want to say, like, yes, we deserve those. We should take them, because we do. But I don't think I should take them under the guise of hurting the community that lives there. Because they're already going to have the World Logistics right across the way, but you could actually put this right across the way also. Because they're not saying they don't want it, they just don't want it there. 200 feet isn't a lot. 60 to 70, that's basically six or seven stories. That's how high it's going to be still. So they're, "Oh, we're reducing it from 100 feet to 60 to 70." That's still a lot, and that's still a lot of wall and grass. So however this council votes, I'm with Protem Delgado. I will live by it, I will die by it, I will always stand ten toes down. But for me, I do not like where this project is at. I wish that the developer had found another location for this project.
Thank you. And next, we have Councilmember David Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. I've lived in that area for now, going on 44 years. I live right down the street from there. Still do, or relocated. And yes, it is a good project. I'm not saying it isn't. It is a good project. But you know, I get complaints every single day. Trucks on Redlands Boulevard going southbound from Uptalupthis. I get complaints from the residents there, and they got good complaints. Well, there's trash, there's cars parked here. Like one resident said, "There's cars that are parked there, they have no regional park there." They don't. I just met with the resident down the street there. Trash all over that side of that road. Because last night, there was three, four cars there. When they left, they got up next morning, she got up and walked out, and it was trash. The thing about it is, the residents in that area, they got nice homes. They want to live smog-free. They don't want to listen to the trucks, day in and day out. And they will be going down Redlands Boulevard, southbound. They do it now, and they'll continue doing it. The residents of my district elected me overwhelmingly the last election, because I believe in them, and I back them 100%. This stat, these are all emails that we all got. 90% of them oppose the project. Probably about 75% of residents in that area that oppose it. Some don't live nearby, but they oppose it. What would have been nice is the developers or investors would have contacted Mr. Edo Banzavi and made an offer on some of his property, built this project. That would have been nice. And then we would have accepted that, the benefits that you're offering us. But I guess maybe Edo didn't want to sell to you. I don't know. That would have been a great idea. Redlands, overpass. I won't be surprised if that overpass collapsed with that many trucks going over it daily. That overpass looks like it's ready to collapse. It cannot sustain any more heavy trucks going over it. So at this point, whatever my colleagues decide up here, it's got to be what it's got to be. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
Thank you. So there are a lot of community benefits, a lot of things that could help our community. Especially the... I did get a lot of emails asking about what is the Moreno Valley Community Foundation? What is it? Is this a nonprofit that we're just giving our money away to? And I spoke with our Assistant City Manager, City Treasurer, and Chief Financial Officer, Brian Mohan. And he shared with me that that's where we bring in donations, like the $100,000 that we got from Amazon that supports our Movil Learns program. So I asked, "What other things have we supported through the foundation?" And he said, "Well, the $6 million we just put towards the park rehabilitation and the refurbishment project. $50,000 to the Moreno Valley College Promise. $50,000 to the higher Movil grad. $50,000 to a higher Movil vet. $20,000 to the Emerging Leadership Council, and $30,000 to our Beautify Movil volunteer program." This is just about 7 million. So with 30 million, what could we do for our residents? It's not just a slush fund for the foundation. In fact, as the Board of Directors, we sit up here, all of the meetings are open meetings. The last time we did anything with the foundation was in June, when we moved, we brought forward the third quarter budget. So all of the foundation's activities are done here, at the dais, in front of the public. Nothing is done behind closed doors. That foundation belongs to the residents, not to the city council, not to us privately, not to any of the staff, but to the residents of Moreno Valley, and we've been using it to benefit you. So will this benefit help us? Certainly. I'm hoping it helps Edgemont and the water. We could have done this a long time ago. And now we know, but we know better, we should do better. So there's a lot at stake tonight. And I'm hoping we think about all of Moreno Valley, not just the residents that live in Anselia. In fact, I think it was a great idea to only market to manufacturing plants. In fact, I looked at the Center of Excellence's labor market data, and the difference in how much an employee that works in a logistics warehouse over the year is about $60,000, whereas the manufacturing is about $107,000. So this would be higher earnings for any employees that are there beyond the unions that are building. We're talking longer wage, long-term increases in wage. So if the project comes in, I have faith that they will benefit the community here in Moreno Valley, especially those who need it the most, especially Edgemont. And the residents of District 2, who would be enjoying a park. I hear a lot from the residents, "There's not enough soccer fields there." Can we talk about how, you know, some teams have more time than others? Well, we just have a need for more fields. So these are the benefits that are on the table tonight.
Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues up here for sharing their perspectives. Thank you to members of the public as well for coming out and sharing your opinions and your concerns, and your support as well for the project. Thank you to both labor unions who are present with us, Local 951, as well as Launa, for the work that you do for being here as well. That doesn't go unnoticed. And just a few things that I would like to touch on and talk about in regards to this particular project. First, I'll start off with the topic of jobs. And as some of the speakers and some of my colleagues have already talked about the type of jobs, the quality of the jobs, and the long-term and the short-term jobs that could result from a project like this, and quite frankly, from any particular project. The reality is that even with the concessions and the community benefits that Hillwood has proposed, which are significant, I think that's not something that we can ignore either. And I really wish that industrial developers had approached projects this way 10, 15 years ago. Unfortunately, it's taken this long now for a developer to step up to the plate and offer a significant amount of community benefits. However, it still doesn't address or guarantee, even though there's a one-year marketing for manufacturing use, it doesn't guarantee that it's going to be used for manufacturing. That one year can pass by during the construction. You know, that could take six to 12 months, and then it could be used for distribution, which I have great concerns about. I've talked about it when the World Logistics Center came up to the dais about the job quality for distribution centers. Unfortunately, we see that majority of those are temp jobs. They're seasonal workers. They don't pay benefits. And I think that our residents deserve better than that. They deserve higher-paying jobs. They deserve benefits. They deserve living wages, so that they can purchase their first homes, they can raise families, they can have higher qualities of life. And unfortunately, this particular project, as proposed, I think will just result in another distribution center. Now, in terms of environmental impacts, again, Hillwood has proposed various items to try to mitigate some of the impacts as far as the truck trips, the air quality... the air quality, the noise impacts as well. And like my colleague from District Four mentioned, her experience with distribution centers, I've also had that same experience, living in a house where I can see PNG from my front door. And every single night, having to go to sleep to the beeping when the trucks are backing up, going to sleep to the slamming from the trailers being unhitched and hitting the ground. You can't, you can't sleep through that. And even if you do get to sleep, in your subconscious, it's still there. And that's only one example of hundreds, if not thousands, of residents who deal with the same thing. And I cannot consciously support a project that would put so many other residents in that same situation. I cannot do that. And again, I'm speaking from experience, having lived in that situation. Now, just again, back to the community benefits, again, it's substantial. You know, it's, what, fifteen million in one-time funds? And then one million per year for fifteen years. The park, the youth center, et cetera, et cetera. It's significant. But it still doesn't address all the issues that I've already brought up, unfortunately. We have forty million square feet that is on its way from the World Logistics Center, just across the street from this proposed project. That's, as of right now, the developer is saying that it's going to be ten years' worth of construction. That's four million square feet of construction of industrial projects per year for ten years. And they plan on breaking ground later this year. That's a lot of jobs for the next ten years on that project alone. And we're not even taking into consideration AB 2011, for example, and being able to create jobs for our local unions, for example, to build residential, to build housing for our communities as well, which is something that I'm a huge proponent of. And so, I agree with the comments and the opinion that this project is still not in the right location. It'll have significant impacts to our residents. And again, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to disapprove this project. And so, I do not support the project, and I will leave my comments at that. So, with that being said, I will entertain a motion from the council on this particular item.
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest some language?
Yes, sir.
So, it would, since this is an appeal, the appropriate motion would be to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's denial of the project based on the findings made by the Planning Commission.
Thank you, City Attorney, and I will make that motion verbatim according to what you just said. And I'm seeking a second.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. Correct. Give me one second. Just for clarification, Mr. City Attorney, a yes vote on this motion...
Deny all the project.
Would deny the project?
Right.
And a no vote would approve the project?
A no vote would just be against denying the project. So, there would have to be an alternative motion to approve it because you have several resolutions and an ordinance. You wanted to approve the project. If you want to reject the project, deny it, then the appropriate motion would be the one I just stated.
And that's the motion...
Vote yes on that. If there's a majority vote on that motion, then the project...
A yes vote on this motion would deny the project, a no vote would approve the project?
A majority no vote.
Okay. Okay, so that's four yeses, one no, which means that the Planning Commission's decision is upheld.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Thank you once again to everyone for being here with us. We will go ahead and go back to the agenda where we left off. Yeah. Okay. So, we will go back now. We had concluded the public comments on non-agenda items. So, we will resume with the public comments on matters on the agenda. And we'll give just another moment as folks are walking out here. Okay. Public comments on matters on the agenda. If you wish to speak on any items on the consent calendar, you will have a total of three minutes to comment on all items on the consent calendar. If you wish to comment on any other items on the agenda other than the public hearing calendar, you will have a total of three minutes to comment on each item at the time the item is called up for consideration. But if we have a large number of speakers, it may be necessary to reduce the amount of time per speaker to allow the council to conclude our business today. For public hearing items, each speaker will be provided with at least five minutes to provide testimony on each public hearing item.
Mr. Mayor, that would just be one public hearing item that we have left. F1?
On F1, yes. Thank you. Okay, so, City Council comments. Would any council members like to make their reports and comments at this time? Seeing none. We will now move on to our joint consent calendars, section A through E on the agenda. All items listed under the consent calendars are considered to be routine in nature and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the City Council or any affiliated agency requests that an item be removed for separate action. The motion to adopt the consent calendars is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the city clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after the public hearing items. For the, for the City Council, are there any items that you would like removed for separate action? Seeing none, that brings us to council questions on consent items for discussion. Are there any questions? Seeing none, brings us to public comments on consent calendar items. Madam Clerk, how many requests do we have to speak?
We have two, Roy Blackard and Tom Gerald Senior.
Thank you. So, we will allocate three minutes per speaker. And first up, we have Mr. Roy Blackard.
The son of the A3, the discretionary funds of the consent calendar. Last time this issue came up, I put a list of questions I wanted to know, just a clarification of how this money is actually approved. Is that that difficult to answer? What's the process and who makes the final decision? I want to know, who makes the final decision call of approving the payments of those discretionary funds in every case? Plain and simple. You want to know why the frustration goes on? It's exactly this. It's not answering the questions. Being told for four decades you're a conspiracy theorist, you don't know what you're talking about. When the evidence is clear and concise. When this council will not do. Or whatever, however the process is, but I would like an explanation of why you cannot get an answer to a simple process question. We're going to have a big discussion, and you're pushing the limits on this public speaking and the way you're doing it. You can't organize a meeting. You don't even know how to write an agenda. It's confusing. It's not freaking rocket science. You want to know why Marina Valley has the reputation it does? It will submit to you this is why. And I, I hope I'd ask the city manager, I'd ask you all in your closing comments to address this. Because just what you've seen happen, and I for one, don't want to hear any complaints from this point forward, that we ain't got this, or we can't have that, or this, or we need that, because I don't see you, any of you, with a plan on how to fix all this stuff. When you presented the opportunity to fix it, just like you won't answer a question, you'll toss it in the trash. That's the reputation that you just stamped in Marina Valley.
Tom Gerald Senior?
Tom Gerald Senior, again, speaking, I'm a bad myself, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, members of the staff and the public. Actually, I have a quick question. Item A4, it's a title that says "Payment Register." Would that be the same thing as what we used to call "Warrant Register"? In the early days, I'm going back twenty... Okay, see the mayor nodding. The reason I ask that, I just like to point out, as a public interest to the public, I don't know how it presents right now. It's probably in that big giant book over there. But I remember looking at some of those decades ago, and I was very impressed because literally every penny the city puts out to write a check for or make a payment for, roster, it's their checkbook. And I was very impressed then. And, you know, we get critics that come up and accuse you guys of all kinds of, you know, misappropriation, and this, that, and the other thing. And there it's all spelled out, you know, chapter and verse, and nicely itemized. So, I haven't looked at it in a long time. But in any event, I want to affirm our good accounting practices and let the public know, you know, if you have questions, you can go down, you can probably pull it up online too now and just look at it at home. It's boring, wonky, but it'll answer all your questions. I was amazed some of the stuff that popped up in there, it was kind of fun reading. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us now to council deliberation if desired. If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendars.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Marquez and a second from Mayor Protem Delgado. Please vote. That passes unanimously. That brings us now to, back to item F, public hearings. Item F1 is the public hearing to review and begin the thirty-day public comment period for the five-year consolidated plan for program years 2023 through 2028 and for the CDBG home and ESG project selections for inclusion in fiscal year 2023-24 annual action plan. And we have a report from Financial and Management Services.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. Obviously, you just read exactly what you guys are doing tonight. This is, the action before you tonight is to conduct a public hearing to start the thirty-day public comment period on our annual entitlement process. Just to give you a highlight as to what the funding or expected funding will be for this particular year, we're looking at the HUD entitlement allocations to the city. For CDBG, roughly 1.9 million dollars. Keep in mind that fifteen percent of that due to HUD CDBG regulations goes to public service component. We do not set that allocation. You do not have the ability to change that allocation as it is set by HUD CDBG regulations. That is the public service piece that goes to a lot of our nonprofits that work in our communities for outreach and so forth of disadvantaged residents. The home component allocation or estimated allocation from HUD is 755,000. And ESG is roughly 169,000. So, those are the dollar amounts in which HUD is estimated to allocate the city this particular year. This action before you tonight literally just sets the two things. The thirty-day public comment on the five-year consolidated plan. Every five years, we have to go ahead and re-adopt our five-year consolidated plan as well as the one-year action plan for the three categories in which I just stated and how they potentially will be allocated to our sub-receipients. The document tonight, as part of the one-year action plan, contains the allocation, the dollar amount allocations I just stated for each of the categories, along with the application summaries that we received from any of our CBOs, which is community-based organizations or ultimately who could be sub-receipients in the future. What those application summaries show is basically the sub-recipient or CBO name, their allocation, or they're, sorry, their requested application amount, along with a summary of what their particular project and programs are so that public can comment on what they're doing and potentially provide council and/or staff any comments as to whether or not they support or would rather not support a particular CBO that has applied for these funds. By no means does this action or anything contained in the staff report and the five-year consolidated plan or the one-year action plan contain any funding request either by our staff or by our consultant or by this particular board or council. That will be coming before you after the thirty-day public comment period is over. Now, as far as the application process, obviously, they were due at the end of January. We have been reviewing those along with our consultant, who obviously is the resident expert for HUD regulations. They are basically our officers for staff to ensure that staff is complying with HUD regulations and so forth. As this particular funding is so restrictive in nature, we want to make sure that we do adhere and comply with all of those regulations. I am available for any questions. I will just leave it at this, that we are just opening our thirty-day public comment period for the five-year consolidated plan and the one-year action plan. By no means are we approving any funding requests from staff and/or council at this particular point in time.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate that report. So, that brings us now to council questions of staff. I do see a request here from Mayor Protem Delgado.
I think you just answered my question, though. There was a total of thirteen public service applications, and they're listed here. This is just the hearing, the thirty-day, opening at the thirty-day. So, I think you answered my question at the end there. Thank you. You knew I was going to ask that.
Okay. I don't see any other questions here. No hands raised. So, we will move on now to the public hearing. I'll go ahead and open the hearing now. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
There are no requests to speak, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will go ahead and close the public hearing. That brings us to deliberation from the council if desired. And just briefly, I want to mention, I know Brian already clarified that we're not allocating any funding or anything of that nature today. Just want to touch base on one thing in particular that earlier this year, we received, the money, I'm not sure if it's actually hit our coffers yet or not, but Congressmember Mark Tocano announced that he was able to secure two million dollars for us in the federal budget that was going to the Salvation Army. So, my only comment would be that if we are able to, I don't know exactly what the demand is for the vouchers and things of that nature for housing, the unhoused. But with that two-million-dollar infusion from the congressional budget, hopefully, if the demand is there for more vouchers, that we may be able to allocate a little bit more money for those this round. But that's all the comments that I have. Any council members have any, any further deliberations? Any council members have any, any further deliberation? Okay. Seeing none, I will make a motion according to staff's recommendations, and I'm seeking a second.
All motion to approve.
Okay. I made the motion, and then a second from, I think everybody's half asleep up here. Second from Mayor Pro Tem Delgado. Please vote. Okay, and that passes unanimously. And we already, we already took care of F2. So that brings us to G, which there are no items that were removed. Item H, there is no item on H. Brings us to item I, which is the City Council Reports. We have three this evening. First one is Mayor Pro Tem with a report from the March Joint Powers Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I'm providing an update from March Joint Powers Commission meeting on Wednesday, April 12th. We heard an update by Colonel Weeman, commander of the Mission Support Group at March. We approved a Fourth Amendment to the March Life Care Development Agreement to allow them until July 31st to complete the pressure-reducing valve installation for water service on the base, which will actually start, supposed to start the construction of the March Life Care Development. So hopefully, we'll see that. But finally, we agreed to discontinue using teleconferencing for our commission meetings. They're all live, and that concludes my update on the last March Joint Powers Commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Next, we have a report from RTA by Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'm providing updates from the RTA Board Administration and Operations Committee meeting held on April 5th. At the, at the Board of Directors meeting on, in April. Hang on one second. It might help if I put my glasses on. The committee approved and recommended to the full Board of Directors for authorizing staff to award an agreement to Burham Benefits Insurance Services for Medical Brokerage Service for a three-year base period with two one-year options. The board authorized staff to join the allegiance for renewal clean hydrogen energy systems and to apply the regional clean hydrogen hub funding opportunities. The board also approved and adopted amendments for the city's or the agents' conflict of interest of code. This concludes my report.
Thank you, council member. We have the third and final report tonight from the Riverside County Transportation Commission. Tonight, I'm providing updates from the RCTC meeting held on April 12th. The commission approved an agreement with San Bernardino County Transportation Authority for the Interstate 15 cross-county toll segment. The commission received an update from CEO Kristin Wozinski of Riverside Transit Agency on the fiscal budget, fleet replacement program, and ongoing agency projects. That concludes my report on the last RCTC meeting. With that, we will move on to our next item, which is I2 Employee Association's Report, and we have none today. And brings us to the famous City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. Just two items tonight. First, just a reminder, our Parks and Community Service is holding another fantastic event. This is going to be Earth Day celebration this Saturday, April 2nd, from 9:00 to 1:00 o'clock at the Conference and Recreational Center at the Demonstration Garden. So please to attend. I know it's competing against the other big event on the south side of town, but if you can make it to this event, please do stop by. The second item was that there was some discussion, I think, last council meeting about the city's not doing enough for veterans. Actually, we're the, one very few cities, we actually have a very robust veterans programming. And at the BURK, we actually have a Veterans Tuesday, and any veterans could come any day when the BURK is open. But especially Veterans Tuesday, we have a lot of great programming for veterans. There's workshops, there's resume workshops, just specific for veterans. There's also people that can help you to understand your veterans' fair benefits, also the different ways of which you could access your benefits. So a lot of different programming. We also have office hours for various veterans organizations. The US Fed's actually has office hours at the BURK. Also, Marina Valley College Veterans Resource Center, they also have office hour at the BURK. And also, we're having a Veterans Job Fair event, and this is going to be on Wednesday, April 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This is at the CRC, and we're going to have various veterans, partners, Loma Linda VA Homeless Veterans Community Employee Service Team, along with all of our various veterans partners, along with a lot of the employers who love to hire veterans. And so please do come if you're looking for a job, or just trying to understand a lot of your benefits. It is there for you, is free, no charge. And once again, this is Wednesday, April 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That concludes City Manager's Report today.
Thank you, City Manager. That brings us now to the City Council Closing Comments. And first up, we have Councilmember Baca Santa Cruz.
Good evening, and thank you to all who are, may still be watching, and thank you to everybody who came out today. Like my colleague, Ms. Shaylinda, I am also a union member. I am, I do sit on the executive board as past president, as well as a negotiator and a job steward. So I really appreciate when we come out and support each other. So it was great to see all the union brothers and sisters, even though the vote didn't go as they wished. But I just want to say thank you for coming out, and also thank you to the residents who come out every week, no matter what's on the agenda. So I appreciate you, I see you out there. I want to invite the residents, this Saturday, City Manager just talked about it, we'll be giving out trees to promote Earth Day here at the Demonstration Garden. As well, on Saturday, we will also be collecting hazardous and electronic waste at the city yard. So if you have any paint or hazardous material at home, also large electronics, we will be taking those at the city yard from 9:00 to 2:00, is that right? 9:00 to 2:00 for free. So please come on down and get rid of your waste and help us, let us help you get rid of that. In addition, we'll be hitting Edgemont with our Beautify Movil on May 13th. So I invite you to go ahead and put that on your calendar now. We'll be promoting it as it gets closer, but I'm excited to say that the next park that we will be beautifying will be in District 1, and that will be Adrian Mitchell Park. And finally, I would like to just put it out there that we need to discuss whether or not we, what our next steps are, City Attorney, on the fact that, from the podium, we did hear, and we did see documents claiming that one of our council members no longer lives in the city. So we want to see what next steps, maybe put it on the agenda. I think that you, as the attorney, would know where to fit it in, if it's a closed item, closed session item that we need to come and discuss, or if it will be here in public, as I hope it will be. But something needs to be discussed, and we need to talk about residency requirements. Because as far as I'm concerned, he's either committed perjury or fraud. So he's either sitting up here fraudulently, or he's committing perjury to the state of California and to the Department of Motor Vehicles, as well as the voter registrar. So it's either perjury or fraud, but we need to find out which one it is. Thank you.
Next, we have closing comments from, second, from Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. And City Attorney, I do welcome that investigation to clear this up, but we'll leave it as that. Today, we had our joint task force at CRC, and I just want to go over some, some concerns and issues that were brought up at the meeting today. Traffic concerns of the Marina Valley School District, the schools. PD is very active on, on these schools before and after classes. Parents picking up kids, parking, no parking, making U-turns. PD is very active, especially with the motors. They're out there, and they're out there for one reason, not to harass anybody who's legally parked or making illegal U-turns. They're there for the protection of our students, so nobody will get run over or fatally injured. We talked about the new school on Nathan. The school superintendent kind of mentioned it about the process of going in and out, what we're looking at. Again, PD did comment on the situation we have there with high speed going down Nathan. Majority of the people driving down that street are out-of-towners, going to the hospitals. So they're not aware of this new school, or this school going to be present. So I was hoping PD could hopefully bite that in the behind and get out there and, and these speeders, and hopefully, we could slow that traffic down before the school opens in the fall of next year. We talked about school crossing guards. I'm not going to get into that because we're in the process of evaluating the, the cost. And hopefully, maybe Brian will can touch on that sometime later in the future on that. Just real brief, we, police department, just we talked about issues in the city. Talked about the recovery rate on vehicles, which is great. Love that. Engineering, talked about that. The city's concerned about the fencing across that new school on Nathan. So that was, another thing was brought up. That's about it, really about it, what happened today at the task force, so it was very productive. I just want to say thanks for all the, all the residents that came out to speak tonight on this project. It sounded good to get all that money, but you know what? The price of somebody's health is priceless. No money will, will give you new lungs, will give you a better health. If you don't protect it, no money will cover that. So I believe that I made a good decision by not approving the project. But you know, I, I listened to the residents, not only in District 3, but the city. And majority of the residents that contacted me, by emails also, opposed the, the project. So at least I can go home and sleep tonight that I voted against it. Other than that, I wish everybody a good evening, and it's getting late, and I'll cut it short. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Shaylinda Bernard.
I would like to thank everyone also for coming out tonight. I like to see a packed house, it's kind of echoey in here tonight. But I appreciate everyone coming out, I appreciate every resident that emailed, called, or showed up tonight to speak, and let us know how they feel, just like I appreciate the developer and the unions for coming out in support of the project. I like to hear it both sides of it. I also would like to close out, and like everyone's trying to keep it brief tonight. I would like to close out in honor of Autism Awareness Month. I would like to also give a big shout out, because I'm a mother of a child that's on the spectrum, to my oldest son, Nathaniel. Sorry, he's my baby. And I would like to give a big shout out to his teachers at El Pachero Preschool, Ms. Tasha, his aides, Ms. Amanda, Ms. Lorena, Ms. Aries. And Ms., Ms. Aries, Ms. Lorena, oh my gosh, and it's because you told me, don't forget. I'm going to count it.
They'll come back to you.
I know. Lorena, Aries, Amanda. No, that's it, leave me alone. No, that's it, that's it, it's only the four of them. For all that they do with their children in the autism program, especially also the other autism teacher, Mrs. E, and all of the aides there. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows that these children, as one parent put it when we were discussing it, one of my friends, you have joined a journey, and it's not always easy. There are some difficulties ahead, because you have to train yourself to think as they think. And sometimes, things that we take for granted for our other children, if you've ever met my youngest, he can talk your head off, literally, I brought him in the office, and he can talk to you about dinosaurs and everything in between. Something as simple as having your child make eye contact and say hi is, is extremely important, and it makes you so proud as a parent. And don't ever take for granted the fact that your children can say hi and bye, or I love you. He, he saw, he saw Mayor Pro Tem Delgado, and I was extremely proud that he'd never met him before, but he looked up at him and said hi. And that was important, because it was a skill we'd been working on. Yeah, it's a skill we had been working on for a while. So don't ever take those moments as a parent for granted. Although he hasn't said I love you yet, I know it's coming. I'm waiting on him to look at me and say, mommy, I love you. So always remember that children on the spectrum think a little differently, but I see you out there as a parent, I hear you, and it's okay. It's, this journey is not always easy, but we're going to get there, and we're going to look back and go, I remember when you couldn't even say hi to anybody. So with that, I'll close and have fun at the airshow, stay off of Cactus all week. Alessandro's probably going to be blocked, so go all the way up Heacock, all the way to beautiful Sunny Mead, and take that to get in and out of town, because if they can't get on Cactus, they're probably going to be on Alessandro. So just go the long route to everything. And if you can, please come up here and get a treat on Saturday, because I will be here. And I think, is that everything we're doing this? Yeah, that's it. And have a good night.
Thank you, council member. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tem Ed Delgado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't know how to follow that, but Nate did good. He, I would have never known, because he did so good, so. So kind of moving forward, as the school year closes, do me a favor. Anybody who sees or comes across a crossing guard, please thank them for what they, they do all year round, all school year. They don't get paid, I mean, I know they get paid a little bit, but they're not there for the money, I guarantee you that. They're probably mostly retired. I have a great relationship with ours up there on, at Sugar Hill, and he is amazing. He, he's very aware of who's who, and all the speeders, and the, the parents that get crazy on him. So please thank them, and for us, you know, as the year, year closes, you guys probably thank them for what they do as well. Reminder, Beautify Movil is coming up. We had a great turnout at the Free County Dump Day. So I don't know, I think there was over 200, 300 cars, 300 residents of the City of Marina Valley, because they had to be City of Marina Valley, that utilized and took advantage of that. So, but in saying that, we have one at the city yard, every Beautify Movil. So every organized Beautify Movil, we can always take that stuff down to the city yard, so take advantage of that as well. I had a town hall at the Sunny Ranch, and it was amazing. And I'll tell you why it was amazing, because we discussed for, for almost two hours stuff that went on in, in the district and their neighborhood. We, not one time, not one time, did we bring up politics. And talk about comments about, it was a great meeting, we got so much accomplished, because we didn't talk politics. We didn't see my, nothing about positions, we just talked about how to make that area better. I'm going to host one on May 6th at the Marina Valley Equestrian Center. So I'm hoping it's very similar to that, that we just get up there and hear the concerns. And I will tell you that the, the folks that were there representing the city, the Sheriff's Department and Public Works, they got a lot of requests to find out something for them, and they, they knocked it out that day or the following day. So it was, it was pretty amazing, so thank you for that. And I know that we're going to close in memory, or in honor of Autism Month, but I would like to read you this. I was going to ask that we close in honor of Rudy. Isaiah 6 says, "Then I heard a voice from the Lord saying, 'Whom shall I send? And who will go for us? And I said, 'Here I am, send me.'" That was Rudy. Rudy said, "No, boss, stay here, let me go find him." Rudy didn't know the guy was armed. Rudy went in and, and, but regardless, if he did know the guy was armed, he would have went after him anyways. So go and tell his people, be ever-hearing, but never understanding, be ever-seeing, but never perceiving. I know we're going to close in honor of Autism Month, but please keep our department and, and all of our public safety folks, including our canines, in your thoughts and prayers. Rudy's services will be held in a couple of weeks, and it is going to be open to the public at the March Air Museum Dog Memorial. And we can, I'll certainly, if you ever want to know the specifics on that, just email me or let me know, and I'll, I'll share that with you. So please be kind to one another. I know that there's still a little bit to figure out with Councilmember Marquez. And, and what I would recommend is we figure it out sooner the better. And Steve, I don't know if we have to do a formal figure it out, or if Councilmember, you and Councilmember Marquez work it out. I don't, I think we should work it out. And the reason I say that is not to, not to put you down, Dave, but it scares me that, that we, this could be null and void, or something that we decide as a, as a group could be null and void because there's a mistake, or there was a decision to, to change your, your address or something. a mistake, or there was a decision to change your address or something. So I think as a council member, I think we should make sure that we're all legit and we're all on the up and up, and if that's, that requires, you called it an investigation, I don't know if it's an investigation, I think it's just that you have to find out what, if it's legit, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so I highly recommend we do that sooner than later, that way we can just continue to move on. One thing that I did see tonight was a lot of people that had different opinions, but they were very respectful, and I think we're moving in the right direction, and this is just another thing that we can move in the right direction and be respectful about it, so. But be kind to one another, and see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I think that means I get five minutes tonight, right? I'll make it shorter than that, but just a couple of things here in closing. I did attend this past week the City Leader Summit in Sacramento. It was very well attended, you had elected officials from all across the state, and this was the first time in a very long time that the California League of Cities held their event in conjunction with CSAC, which is the, I guess, counterpart to the league, but for the County Board of Supervisors across the entire state of California, so we were all there together. Our own supervisor was there, and the current president of CSAC is Supervisor Chuck Washington, who represents, I forget the district number, but he's from Riverside County as well, so that went really well. I had a chance to meet with several state legislators, including our legislators, Senator Richard Roth and Assemblymember Jackson, as well as one of the newest members, who's one of my former colleagues on the Latino Caucus, Assemblymember Soria out of Fresno, and others as well, so that went really well. We talked about homelessness, we talked about housing, new pieces of legislation that are going through the process, and it was just a lot of people up there, all at the same time, there are public hearings happening, people running all over the place, so it was a busy, busy time, but very, very productive, and a lot of good information that I was able to bring back from there. Also, was able to attend the Senior Center Easter Egg Hunt, and it's always nice to go there. I don't go as often as I would like, but I think Councilmember Marquez was there as well, and I would have jumped in and did a little bit of Zumba dancing with them, but I was all suited up, so I said, maybe next time, let me put my tennis shoes on, so it's always nice, always really nice to get there, to be with them. I also was able to attend the Rally Around Fitness event that took place at March Middle School, and what that event is, I think last year Mayor Protem attended that one, and essentially what that is, is an event for rallying around fitness for our special needs students from across Marina Valley Unified. So we all came together on that day, and I mean, you should have seen the smiles on their faces, they were so excited and happy to just, you know, do the countdown and then start, you know, going through all the obstacle courses and play all the sports. It was really, really nice, so just thank you to Marina Valley Unified for having me out there. Reminder that the airshow is also coming up on the base, as has already been mentioned, that is coming up, yeah, 21st and, actually, 22nd and 23rd, right, Saturday and Sunday? Yeah, 22nd and 23rd, that's this weekend, so just a reminder that that is free admission and free parking, again, free admission, free parking, and they're expecting a massive turnout, so hope to see you all there. Beautify Movil has already been mentioned, so this time around, it'll be District 1 and District 3, so look forward to seeing everybody out there as well. Anybody that wants to volunteer, please come out and join us. I'll be having a community meeting at the Espresso Bar in Sunny Mead Ranch next Tuesday at 6:30 p.m., so if anybody would like to come out and ask any questions, or just get a little bit of input, maybe share your concerns, I'll be there at the Cupcake and Espresso Bar up in Sunny Mead Ranch next Tuesday at 6:30 p.m. Also, the Autism Awareness Art Show that is happening tomorrow, one of the public speakers came out and shared a little bit of information about that, so that is happening at Palm Middle School tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:30. The Movil sign letters will be there on display, and it's going to be really nice, so anybody that would like to come out to that, look forward to seeing you there. And in closing, would just like to honor Councilmember Bernard's request to close in honor of Autism Awareness Month, and you know, while I don't have, my son is not autistic, but you know, just having young children and being on a city council, you know, serving in these type of positions, it's not easy, and anybody else, you know, whether you work at City Hall or anywhere else, you know, any type of day job that you have is just, you know, now I'm experiencing that firsthand, right? You know, how important it is to have a babysitter, something that simple, and how much work it is, so you know, it's nice to wake up in the morning and, you know, you just see their smiley faces, so just want to honor your request, Councilmember Bernard, to close in honor of Autism Awareness Month, and also to close in memory of K-9 Rudy. So with that, have a good night, and we'll see you at the next one.